All right, I call to order this January ninth, two thousand and twenty four, meeting of the Fairfield Town Plan and Zoning Commission. Before we begin, we are without Chair Noonan and Commissioner Ford today, so Seibert and Eric Collins will be seated for the items reporting a vote. First up, we have the meeting minutes for our last meeting, December sixth, two thousand and twenty three. Eric Seibert, what's your vote? Second. Randolph. Seibert, any comments? Commissioner Harrison.
I had just one minor. I'm just wondering if we should just put a comma after vice chairman? Because it may look a little confusing on who the actual vice chairman is. I think it should be a comma. Maybe?
What line are you on? I'm sorry.
Sorry, members present.
Okay.
It's a minor, yep. I thought they looked good.
Any other comments?
I'm sorry, you want? I'm missing your phone. So under members present, this is Tom, Tom, you're the chairman, Tom Crisillo, vice chair.
Sorry, after my, my last name, sorry.
Okay.
Be a comma, sorry.
Oh, I got you. Good. All right, I got you. Yep.
Commissioner Braun.
It's a little confusing. To when it goes into, should there be a heading before closed executive session? Think of the agenda, there's probably a heading that said, close executive session. It just, it looks like this is under one oh seven three North Benson Road item. Where it says discussion of pending litigation. I think there should be a heading that says, closed executive session there, maybe, to make it clear that it's not part of that item. Kind of track, the, the minutes kind of track the agendas, right, in terms of how we lay them out.
Yeah, I don't think that's an issue. It does, it does say Berkeley Road LLC versus TPC next to that, but, but if, if you'd rather have the title as, as it appeared on the agenda, I don't think.
Okay.
We can certainly do that, if that's the inclination of the commission.
I think that's how it appeared on the agenda for, for that.
You're correct. There was a heading there.
Yeah, I was, when I looked at this, I got.
We can certainly add that heading.
Any other comments from the commission? Commissioner Seibert, are you okay with amending it?
Yeah.
Put this to a vote, all in favor of approving with the suggested edits. Say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Six hands and an aye, motion unanimously. Next up, we have a request of Al Camerata for a fifty percent release of a nine four thousand twenty five dollar bond pertaining to special permanent improvements in a neighborhood design district at three forty five Reef Road. Mr. Went.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, in January of this year, this commission approved a nine unit residential development adjacent to the newly completed nine unit residential development. You do have an email in your packet from our engineering department saying that the drainage system is in which comprises more than fifty percent of the bond, so they are therefore recommending fifty percent release.
Have a motion? Commissioner Braun.
Um. I move to approve, I have a question though, but I'll wait till discussion.
This motion to approve, Commissioner Harrison, second.
I'll second.
Commissioner Braun.
The the name of the, who, who can request a release? The name of the applicant was an LLC last time. Does there have to be some kind of change of authorized to?
There, there was a change in ownership from when the time the applicant, application was approved at the time the present, so the Mr. Camerata, who's now purchased the property and developing it, was not the original applicant. So he is now the owner and it's his money that was.
Their new LLC or something, or is it just him?
I don't know what.
Anything to say?
He's the, he's the, he's the principal of the LLC that currently owns the property.
That's fine. And just reading through the gentleman that writes, I think he's in the engineering department, he said that they had complied with the requirements. Is this the first nine unit townhouse development or the second one?
It's the second one. The nine unit, one, the one. One is complete.
Next door to each other.
And the other is foundations. Yes.
That's all that was required in order to.
For fifty percent. Most of the money, most of the money that's bonded is in the underground drainage.
Thank you. Based on that, then I would in favor of releasing that half of the.
Harrison.
I have nothing further to add.
Your comments, questions from the commission? Put this to vote, all those in favor of the motion to approve. Say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Six hands and an aye, motion unanimously. Moving on to an application for recommendation to public hearing, it's a petition of residents to establish Catamount Road as a scenic road pursuant to the scenic road ordinance. Again, Mr. Went.
As it says here, residents of Catamount Road have petitioned to, for this commission to establish Catamount as a scenic road. When we schedule this for public hearing, we'll provide for you the, the background information that they provided and the emails from Public Works and the Police Department, so scenic road ordinance, but pursuant to the ordinance, it does require public hearing for that qualification, so we're putting it on the agenda to recognize that that'll be the subject of a future hearing.
Have a motion? Eric Randolph. Still proof? Second. Commissioner Seibert, Commissioner Randolph, any comments?
I guess my only question is, will there be clarification on what constitutes a scenic road?
Yes, we'll, we'll provide you copies of the ordinance. The essence of the scenic road ordinance is we have many older roads in town that aren't built current, but I would say modern standard, a typical fifty foot town right of way with a thirty feet pavement. While Catamount Road has a fifty foot right of way, it's narrower than a lot of roads, it's fairly windy and scenic, there's a lot of stone walls there. And the essence of the scenic road ordinance means simply that in most cases, if the Public Works Department is going to be paving a road, hey, we wanna, we wanna widen it here, they just go ahead and put that on their, on their plan of work. For scenic road, it requires a second look, that, hey, are we designated a scenic? Should we be doing this? Is that gonna disrupt a scenic circuit? So it just gives you guys a, an opportunity to review it before improvements are made or considered.
It's dumb. Point of interest, do, do we have other scenic routes that?
We do, I'll, I'll provide you that list. There's probably a couple dozen roads over the years have been established as scenic. We haven't seen one in, in recent time. The scenic road ordinance was adopted in the nineties and shortly thereafter, there was a kind of a flurry of petitions. It's, you'll see, it's, it's pretty self-evident from the list of what the roads are. They're, they're the older roads, the more narrow roads that don't have a ton of traffic.
The scenic road ordinance is an ordinance as opposed to a regulation.
Right. It's a town ordinance that gives this commission the authority, and we get input from the Public Works Department and Police Department as, hey, is there any public safety issue here that would otherwise prevent a recommendation for this being scenic? So we'll, we'll provide all that backup for you.
Any other questions, comments? Let's put this to a vote, all those in favor of moving to a public hearing, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Six hands and an aye, motion unanimously. Next, we have a non-binding pre-application review for a potential mixed-use development, twenty one seventy nine and twenty one ninety nine Post Road and twenty nine Fairfield Place. Tony Fallon.
Chairman, good evening. I won't say for the record because this is a pre-op, but I'm here tonight, pleased to be representing clients I'll introduce shortly. We do appreciate your time on this pre-op. Abraham Lincoln once said that a man never heard much with his mouth open, and I try to bring that to the pre-ops because we're really here to give you an opportunity to give us your input, and we appreciate your time in doing that. So we'll try to keep our remarks fairly brief to leave enough time for you to ask questions and, and as I said, give you our input. We are looking to develop a mixed-use development at the properties that the chair indicated. As you know, from our submission, it's a forty unit residential development, a mix of studio and one bedroom units. The first floor, as we contemplate it, is going to consist of space to accommodate retail uses in a restaurant. There's a very exciting concept with, which Mark will, Mark Andre will make you familiar in a minute to create a public plaza area which could be utilized for community gatherings where people can socialize and congregate. It does, obviously, under Mark's design, I think, include a very upscale and very beautiful interior and exterior vision for the property and will be very high quality and attractive. Ultimately, the outdoor space, the public plaza space in conjunction with the restaurant is going to provide an opportunity, we think, for a very highly dynamic and multifunctional area. This is an underutilized site, obviously, and it's really at a gateway location in our community. So we think our goal is to work with you to collaboratively come up with a proposal that does assume the zoning of this property in the center design business district as recommended by the comprehensive plan. And we want to share with you the vision we have for, we think, a very outstanding, unique, mixed-use property. With me tonight are the principals of Sunshine Development, and they are Mr. Mark Andre, who's also our architect, and you'll hear from him in a moment, and Mr. Alexander Lakic, who is also here tonight. As I said, Mark's talents, I think, become evidence when you look at the the, the, the design here, but a strong undercurrent of our presentation to you, which we seek your input on, is a very strong commitment in this application to increasing affordable housing options that we all agree are needed in the community. So it's hoped at the end of the day that the development of this property will provide a certain benchmark, if you will, both aesthetically and as a practical matter to show that we have a real commitment to developing this part of town, which I think does need that type of a commitment and also lay the groundwork in the context of a mixed-use development in the center design district for a real meaningful component of affordable housing. I list in the letter that I submitted December twenty six, two thousand and twenty three, the various amendments that we're asking you, we will ask you, subject to the input we receive from you tonight, to consider as formal text amendments. These are the driving forces relative to this vision and what we want to create. I won't review them all tonight individually because of the interest of time, but I certainly welcome any comments. We welcome any comments or questions you might have with regard to any of the specific amendments that we do intend to bring forward. The one thing I, I did mention already, and I would expand upon, is we very much would like to get your input in terms of the matter pertaining to the requirement for affordable units in this particular development. We're actually suggesting thirty percent, and we would make that part of our text amendment for this particular district if you give us positive feedback. As you know, right now, your regulations, I think, are twelve percent. These applicants, who are longtime residents of Fairfield with strong roots in the community, strongly believe that we need to increase our commitment to development of affordable housing in mixed-use projects such as this. So we would be suggesting, unless we got different input from you or staff ultimately, to seek a text amendment that would require thirty percent of those units to be affordable. And we think that would have a very good effect relative to not only this development, but also the general provisions of the regulations. So before I wander on and the ghost of Abraham Lincoln speaks to me, let me, let me introduce Mark. It's going to give you Mark Andre, who's going to give you a brief overview of our concept and design.
All right, I'm gonna try to go really fast. I got three pages of a lot of stuff. Anyway, my name is Mark Andre. I'm a local architect. For those of you who don't know me, my practice is out of Sherman Street. I've been a town resident here for twenty four years. I have with me my business partner for this project. We are longtime friends, and he's here with his wife, Eric Lakic. This is Jessica McHugh. This is the other architect in our office, working together with this project. So I'm gonna read my, my little description, and then, then we're gonna open the floor to you guys. As you all know, twenty one seventy nine Post Road is a vacant lot located at the northerly corner of the Post Road in Lindbergh. Twenty one seventy nine is at the southerly corner of the Post Road in Fairfield Place. That site has two buildings. There's a masonry building that is used as a smoke shop, and another building there, it's a two-family residence. Twenty nine Fairfield Place is behind twenty one ninety nine front in Fairfield Place, and that property has a single family. All three properties combined has a total thirty one thousand one hundred square feet, and it's all three located in a design-centered district. Our proposal provides a unique opportunity to work with you guys to develop all three properties as one combined lot into a mixed-use development that incorporates most of the recommendation in the final draft of the Fairfield Transit Oriented Development Study that was conducted by Goody Clancy dated August nineteenth, published in the town website. Here's our project description. Our proposal has five components. Public spaces that include public plaza, mini park, landscape streetscape with new sidewalk along Lindbergh and Fairfield Place, those streets currently have no sidewalk except the Post Road. We believe that will enable community engagement in a street and traffic. Our proposal is actually within ten fifteen minutes of the Fairfield Center train station. Number two, screen parking areas for about seventy spaces and back parking throughout the site. We also estimate there will be roughly about twenty off-street park in front in our development along the Post Road, Lindbergh Street, and Fairfield Place. Number three, commercial use that you, that's included in coffee shop, a restaurant, small retail stores that will activate the street level and enable pedestrian traffic from Fairfield Center to our complex. Number four, forty smaller residential units on three floors with about twenty percent studios and eighty percent one-bedroom. Up to thirty percent of the total units are below market rate dedicated to applicant earning sixty percent medium area income and eighty percent medium area income. Currently, similar development in our town, only ten percent is required. The, the study in the TOD is recommending twelve percent. Number five, a building with well-articulated facade that features landscape balconies, rooftop constructed with durable materials and will have a high-performance energy exhaust and mechanical system. This is our summary. Number one, fifteen foot floor-to-floor height at the commercial floor as recommended in your TOD study. Number two, one commercial floor and three residential floor about the parking at the basement level as recommended in your TOD study. Fifty to fifty-two foot high total and four stories as recommended in your TOD study. Up to thirty percent below market rate units and set up to twelve percent recommended in your final draft of the latest TOD. One point two five parking spaces per residential unit as recommended in your TOD study. Oppos parking reduction for development that provide public plaza where restaurant and residential use are combined. Number seven, smaller residential units ranging from five hundred to eleven hundred square feet to allow more affordable rental pricing option. Number eight, FAR less than two percent, where three is being recommended in your TOD study. Nine, well-articulated facade that create transition between the commercial base and the residential use that features outdoor spaces, shading elements, materials and textures and colors that create pleasing visual interest and variation in the exterior facade. Number ten, landscape ground level and parking. Number eleven, public plaza, mini park to encourage public engagement and extend the downtown vibrancy as recommended in your TOD study.
Thank you. Thanks, Mark. So just as we turn it over to you, I think our vision here, as I said, and Mark elaborated on, is to facilitate the development of what we think will be a very vibrant mixed-use development, the walking distance of our downtown area on these currently underutilized parcels. We hope and expect that if you agree with our vision here, that this will provide an incentive for future development in this important gateway area of the community. Provide for an exciting and creative mixed-use development and provide regulations, at least in this district, that would have a very strong emphasis on the commitment to affordable housing opportunities in our town, especially in the concept or in the context of mixed-use developments such as this. So we think this would have, will have a very extremely positive effect on the immediate area, our downtown center, and the town as a whole. And we, we can accomplish all of that with this beautiful architecture in a, in a, in a complex that generates not only a lot of diversification of retail and housing uses, but does so with a real commitment to affordable housing. So before we take any next steps in this process, we wanted to share this vision with you in a free act, and we welcome your comments, thoughts, questions, and appreciate your time in doing so.
Commissioner Harrison.
Thank you for your presentation. I, I think it's, you know, a very wonderful concept, but my biggest issue, and we, we all hear it all the time, is traffic, especially in this board, or what would you propose to mitigate any issues? Because I both know what we'll hear from neighbors, rightly so. It's gonna cause a big, big issue. Stop ending an entire neighborhood. Not saying it's a bad thing, but I'm just saying it's gonna be a big significant thing.
No, clearly, Commissioner, when we move forward with a full application, we're gonna have to include comprehensive traffic analysis. I won't try to prejudge that, but obviously the development is going to have to stand on its own merits with regard to not having any adverse impact with regard to, to traffic. We believe that is likely the case because, you know, of the forty units, thirty, excuse me, how many studios, Mark?
Twenty percent.
Twenty percent will be studios, the others will be one-bedroom. And as I think is borne out in other applications that you've seen and, and are in the process of seeing, the, the impact during peak hours in the morning and the afternoon with regard to such residential use is not particularly significant. The first floor will be devoted to retail, but it'll be smaller. I, I'll call it mom and pop retail. And of course, the restaurant uses generally are busiest in the evening when traffic is, you know, not as significant. It's not, it's not a peak hour generator. So we're confident, comfortable, and believe that we can accommodate this development on the Post Road in our center, just what would be our center design district, without having any adverse impact on, certainly, traffic on the Post Road. Also, in terms of the side and abutting residential streets, I don't see this particularly development, fronting as it is on the Post Road, would have tremendous impact there. But all of that will have to be demonstrated through a professional analysis to your satisfaction, along with the analysis of your police department and your engineering department would have.
Thinking another traffic light might be eaten here. Again.
Yeah.
Um. Has there been any preliminary outreach to neighbors?
Not at this, not at this point, but there certainly would be. It's in, we, we want to come to you first.
Commissioner Braun.
Um. In terms of, I have a few things I just, I'll just go in order of how I wrote it down. What's the size of the lot now, and how much will the impervious surface change? Maybe not exact, but generally speaking.
The lot is thirty one thousand square feet, but I.
Two-thirds of an acre?
Three quarters, all three lots. I don't, I, I didn't compute the existing impervious versus proposed, but the proposed area is.
Kind of figure out the footprint of the project and where the parking is, is.
It's, it's, the parking is pretty much fully enclosed, where the entire basement will be a parking garage.
That's gonna be built into the ground?
Correct. So very few parkings will be visible from, from, from the site. Let me show you.
Actually, four floors above parking, parking will be in the basement.
I know. One floor parking, and in the ground floor, a portion of the building would be parking.
So the retail is in the front and the parkings in the back?
So this blue is retail, it's gonna be our management office, and then this is a parking garage here.
Parking garage?
Yeah. We only have about one three, five, about nineteen, nine surface parking.
I'm on it. And that's in the back?
That's in the back.
Where's all that green space that I saw on one of the other plans?
This is all of this.
Well, I thought I saw a much bigger的空间.
The same. Commissioner Braun, to the one point I make, obviously, again, as part of a full application, we'll have to provide a detailed engineering figure, but the one thing I think is worthy of, you know, a comment is, right now, that site is not improved with any provisions for water quality or water control, and obviously, this would have to be a fully engineered system. So I think in terms of matters, in terms of water and, and, and water quality, we'd be making a big improvement.
I guess it depends on how high the water table is and.
Yeah, and that's all, has to be studied.
As far as the design, it, it doesn't seem to me like it's sort of transitional. It seems more like it's corporate industrial park looking. So how close is it to the houses nearby? Are those white buildings on S K two hundred? Are they houses next door?
They're nearby, correct.
It seems kind of like it towers over them, but also, it doesn't seem, I would prefer, personal design preference would be to make it look a little more more or less industrial or more like there's, it doesn't look like there's residences in there. It looks more like it's an office building to me. And in terms of the vertical setback, or the, you explain that again to me. As you go, it has to go in a certain number of feet as you go up certain.
Yeah, but so what we're proposing, so with, with your new requirement of fifteen foot floor-to-floor, if you really think about it.
Fifteen foot for the retail?
For the retail. So if you, you, if you do a ten-foot floor-to-floor as recommended in the TOD for, for the next floor, so automatically, you can only have two floors. You would have to set back the third floor. So what we're proposing instead is to do three floors, and then the fourth floor, we set it back five feet. That's what we would recommend. And the idea previously with that, the setback, one per three feet, we didn't have fifteen-foot floor requirement for the commercial space. So essentially, you could achieve, you could have three floors with ten-foot floor-to-floor. At the, you know, whether you have commercial at the ground floor, and then set back the, the third, the fourth floor.
So when I'm looking at this S K two oh one, that's, that's the portion you'd see from the Post Road.
Correct.
Fairfield Place.
And then we also provide layers where the, the commercial floor, we have like a covered area that provide balcony, so that's create a separation between the, the ground floor, commercial, and the, and, and the residential. And then this floor is set back.
So the building is fifty-two feet tall?
Fifty-two, fifty-two feet tall, correct.
And those are elevators in the corners?
Correct. Yes.
How, how close is it, is the building structure to the boundary on the next house up on Fairfield, and the one, I think, Lindbergh is the other one?
Yeah, so over there.
The whole block, basically.
Yeah. We will have a, a little bit over fifteen feet.
Between.
On Fairfield, on Fairfield Place, correct.
Other side, does that hit up against a house also, or?
So. No. The, the other closest part is the rear area.
S K L one hundred, for those of you who are.
It's a little tricky, so I would have to describe it.
Where is it, Chuck? S K L one hundred. Yeah, maybe.
I'll have a pointer.
S K one oh one, he's pointing out.
So this is a portion, this area here is covered.
Mark, see if you can stretch that arm, because I agree with Commissioner Harrison. Can you, can you give a little sense for?
That's S K one oh one?
That's S K one hundred.
One hundred?
That's one oh one.
That's not one. I have a black and white here, it's coloring it up.
That's, this is.
That's S K one hundred.
That's a two one oh one.
That says one oh one.
So that's one oh one? One up here is S K L one hundred.
Okay, it doesn't matter. It's the same.
It's the same as S K one oh one?
Yeah.
Actually, it looks a little different.
The shading area.
I see.
Yeah, it's the shading area.
We're trying to point it off up there so the other can see.
A little short.
I know, just do your best.
So when it says mini park, where there's that arrow, and then there's that little bar over there, the staircase, the ramp going down to the, to the basement. the staircase, the ramp going down to the, to the basement. So I'm using the portion of that ramp for dumpster location. And the building is, you know, is where the staircase is. So there's a lot more separation between the.
It's on the Lindberg side, the.
That's in the backyard of the property on Lindberg.
So how many feet?
But right now, from here, this is about fifty, this is ten. But then this will be even more, there will be about maybe twenty-five feet to the, to the staircase.
So ten with Lindberg?
Yeah, so what we're looking, what we would request from you guys for a property that has three street frontage, we would want to maintain ten foot all the way around. In this case, where we have the park, we don't, we have, we don't really have the need to have ten feet. We would use all that space to create a park, a buffer that's actually connect Fairfield Place all the way around to Lindberg. And then this portion is actually our garage ramp coming out, and then we would cover it and create more green.
In my letter, that's item number two of the proposed amendments. Then that's four point seven six one and twelve point seven six four, where I referenced that setback.
For Attorney Fallon, can I still on the back here? Can you just explain spot zoning and why this would not be?
Well, you're, you're considering as part of your plan, the extension of the design commercial district. And, and we think quite properly, you are considering extension, extending that zone to cover the area we're talking about.
The downtown district?
Right.
It's in the design commercial now. It would be expanding, we would be considering extending the density of the downtown.
Downtown, correct.
denser than the design commercial district.
Correct. And, and we think, you know, there's, there are certain benefits, you know, that's why I think the plan is at least considering that. We think this type of a mixed use development works well in the center. We think if you're looking long term, in terms of your planning hats, and, you know, we all know this area of town, I've referred to at least this parcel as being underutilized, but there certainly is parcels immediately across the street and whatnot, but over the coming years, you and your colleagues are going to have to deal with in terms of long-term planning function for the town, because the property is there. And as I said, it's an important area because it is a gateway to the town. I personally believe that you're best served in doing that with the center design business district in place. I think that makes sense. And in the long run, I think that's more protective of the kind of uses and the kind of development that you have in the zone. But that clearly is an important decision that you're going to have to make because this, this proposal does contemplate general compliance with a couple of little tweaks, as I've referred to in my letter, with the center design business district regulations.
Which ends around, a little beyond Thorpe Street, which is.
Correct.
Quarter mile.
Right.
East of here.
To answer your question, I don't think an extension of the zone, a quarter of a mile, can be consistent with the overall zoning of the center district would be considered spot zoning. I think that's just, that's just.
Talking about, see, I haven't analyzed your, would you be talking about extending the center district to this place or simply changing this so it ties in to?
Wait, we're just, that, your recommendation.
Things we're talking about, we're talking about expanding the density of the center district to begin with, and then how far we want to expand that higher density footprint.
Correct.
Of Mill River.
And that's.
Kind of took it up a little bit, I don't know if you're there that day, but.
And that's a big question for you. But we're trying to, I guess what we're trying to do is to provide you a vision with what, at least on these parcels, could be the effect of the extension of the zone to the center design business district. And, you know, we're prejudiced, I guess, but we, we think it's, we think it's a pretty exciting concept. And especially with the commitment to a higher requirement of affordable component, at least in these center design mixed use projects. We think that's pretty exciting, and we think that would say a lot about Fairfield's commitment to affordable housing and the commission's to affordable housing.
Let's get to, let's get to Commissioner Randolph and then Commissioner Levy.
Oh, so just one clarification question, Attorney Fallon. You said a text amendment is required for thirty percent of, thirty percent affordable requirement. Please clarify that.
Yeah, right now, in your regulations, there is a requirement that any project of ten or more units has to have an affordable component of ten percent. You are looking at, in your considerations of amendment, to raising that to twelve percent. And what this applicant somewhat dramatically throws out is, we'd be very comfortable for this proposal with a text amendment that required that a mixed use development within, at least how we write it up, the center design district would have a minimum requirement of thirty percent affordable. Now, you may, on reflection, determine that that's not what you want to do, but the message that we're sending you is that these two local residents, experienced developers and designers are very much committed to affordable housing on this site and would, with, if we're given incentive or desire to do so, that's what we could embody in a text amendment. That's referenced in my material.
So the text, the text amendment you're referring to would require all similar developers to have thirty percent?
No, I mean, that's.
You clarify.
If we, if, no, I don't want, we could, yes, the answer is if that's the input that we got from you or we got perhaps from you indirectly from staff, we'd be comfortable with such an amendment. If it's feeling that that might not be where you want to go, we could certainly, but we certainly can, we can accommodate a level of affordable component in this project up to thirty percent.
Mr. Wett has a comment on this?
I just want to make, Jim Wett, for the record, I just want to make an important clarification. The fact that this applicant is proposing to raise the threshold of affordability to thirty percent shouldn't be confused with the eight dash thirty G requirement is thirty percent. This would not be an eight dash thirty G proposal, it's mixed use, can't be an eight dash thirty G. So I just want to make sure there's no confusion that the thirty percent then creates a different threshold of review for the commission. It's a separate matter.
So I want, I want, I want to be very clear. If we wanted to do an eight thirty G, we wouldn't have come here for a free app. Full stop. We are fully invested in this. We want to do a mixed use project. We want to run, build this building and run it. What we've, some of this recommendation that we're making, those recommendations are actually being used in other towns who have more stringent regulation than we do. And an architect, I believe, so, you know, and reading through your TODs, a lot of these recommendations that you now discussing makes a lot of sense. And we think in our project, we can, we can apply them.
It's an interesting.
To you, it's, this is not an eight thirty G application.
It's an interesting concept. I mean, when you think about it, what this embodies somewhat, I believe, is a win-win. Because if, if you follow this approach, you get the thirty percent unit affordability factor, which is at the heart of eight dash thirty G. But you'd also get a mixed use project with some vibrancy, which you can't get under eight dash thirty G. We've been down that road before. And you would also get a development that, you know, as I said, is, I think, very attractive, but compliant with your zoning regulations. So this is not an eight dash thirty G, but the thirty percent would mirror the benefits of an eight dash thirty G without what might be assumed maybe the difference.
That would not be over in it.
I appreciate the clarification. I have two more questions, but I'll let you to someone else.
Let me go to Commissioner Levy, he's been waiting patiently.
Thank you. Good evening, Attorney Fallon. By way of feedback, I would like to say that, in my opinion, the proposed project is very well designed. I think Architect Andre has done an excellent job. I think it is a good transition, even though there are some residences in the area. It's very consistent with the office buildings as you come down the post road. I particularly like the fact that, unlike the project opposite Martel, that it is close to the street line, bringing the businesses closer and making it more street friendly. And the prospect of having thirty percent affordable housing in this area, I think, is wonderful. And if you remember my comments from Rowan Street, I think this is the ideal way to go. Basically incorporating the benefits of an eight thirty G along with a vibrant, you know, resident, business, mixed use. My question is more of a legal one, which is what, what do you need from the commission if this was to go forward in terms of the legalities of either zone change, extension, or a basic summary of the amendments? And what impact they would have, either specific to this property or to other, you know, center design business districts?
Right. Well, I think, Commissioner, obviously, as we discussed a minute ago, a change of zone to the center design business district is contemplated here. We would be compliant with those standards generally. And without those standards extended to this property, then this development, as it's brought forth to you conceptually tonight, could not be achieved. As far as the amendments that we need, if you look at my letter of December twenty-sixth, I set forth at the bottom, starting at the bottom of the second page, the areas that we would need to tweak by way of amendment. I didn't review them all in detail tonight because of the time constraints. But if, if, if we got an encouraging light from you, understanding that these pre-apps are all without prejudice and we've signed the form and nobody's bound to anything here. But if we felt that there was enough positive feedback to move forward, then we would have to address a change of zone, unless you had already extended the zone. And we would have to address certain text amendments to the regulations as generally set forth in my letter, although they certainly could be tweaked working with ourselves and with staff to ensure that they, that they didn't have breath more than the commission wanted them to have. And then a special permit and site plan. So those, those are the three components, zone change, text amendment, and special permit and site plan approval.
Very good, thank you.
Commissioner Collins?
Yeah, I just wanted to go to the green space that says here mini park. Is that, is that open to the public?
Correct.
And what about this, I'm a big dog fan here.
The little mini dog park, I think we would want it to be our residence.
So, because you really can't have a planting area and a dog park.
So, so, so the dog park, it's part of the garage covered structure. So it's actually on the slant. So I think, and it will be fenced, so we would want that to be dedicated only to our, to our residents. But the mini park, the public plaza, that's open to the, to the neighborhood, to the general public.
We're kind of excited about that because we think especially with the restaurant use, that could be especially seasonally kind of a nice, not that any, that's going to be limited to restaurant patrons. But it's, you know, and, you know, you can get into little concerts, summer things, you know. I think it could be nice for the neighborhood beyond.
That was my other question is, is with the, what do you propose for like the CO to be for the restaurant space?
So our, our goal is to work with you guys. Once this is approved, we, we actually have a potential restaurant or a friend of mine wants to open a restaurant in that location. So he actually, he wants the southern corner of the property. So, so if we, if you like our concept, some of the, you know, creative ideas we have for the parking, which we think are in line with what you guys, you know, discussing now. I think this would work for us. So then, once, once this approved and once we find our restaurant tenant, they would just come in and get a compliance, zoning compliance, and then they can, they'll be able to open their doors. So they won't have to come and apply for variance or anything else.
When they get the, in order to get your liquor permit, you need to allocate X amount of spots for your CO. So what is, what is your guess of what the CO would be?
So if you, I think in the TOD, you guys looking at bringing the restaurant parking requirement in line with retail. If that were to be the case, we would have enough parking for the restaurant.
CEO of seventy-eight people. Here's an allocated amount of parking you have to.
What we are proposing, we're proposing fifty spaces for the residential units, and we have about eighteen for the retail. And we have three spaces for us. So eighteen spaces can get us a decent sized restaurant if we're using the standard that you currently use for your retail.
So eighteen just for the restaurant?
We would only need actually, I, I, so for example, if.
For your license, I know. If you apply for your license, you have to have X amount of spots for whatever CEO you.
Let's, let's look at one scenario. For example, if we bring the restaurant parking requirement with, aligned with retail. So let's say the first fifteen hundred is only one. So let's say I have a two, twenty-five hundred square foot patron area, and I only have a thousand square feet. And if you divide that either by two fifty or three hundred thirty-three, our parking requirement would be less than ten. So we would have, under this proposal, we would have sufficient parking.
Commissioner Harrison?
Thank you. I would echo what Commissioner Levy said. I think it's a great, great concept and a nice way to transition into town. You know, the devils are always in the details. Why not an eight thirty G? I mean, any answer that, no.
No, I, yeah, it's, it's. Looking at me when you say that. Why not an eight thirty G?
So I'll, I'll tell you why.
You go first.
I'll tell you exactly why. We live here, our kids went to school here. We want this project, we don't want to spend a couple of years litigate this. We like the direction that you guys, you know, with all the study, what you want to do with the town town, the downtown. And we think this gives us a perfect opportunities. We're not, we're not your typical developer. So if we can collaborate and then maybe tweak some of the, our proposal to make this work, tentatively, we supposed to close on this property by the end of April. So we hope in between now and April, we're going to work with you guys, you know, maybe some of the stuff we have, maybe you can, you know, maybe you need to tweak them a little bit, but we would like to go in the right direction and get, get a good approval. And do a project that you all going to be happy that you can also use and say, hey, you guys want to do this, if you do this kind of project in our town, these are the kind of things that, these are developers, they did. Why don't you, you know, use some of their, their concept? I remember there was a debate about one of our project downtown, and someone mentioned, why couldn't you do a mixed use to a eight thirty G? That's not allowed under the current law. But for us, it's more than just that. We like the mixed use, it creates vibrancy. Personally, as an architect, professionally, I do not like single use type development. It doesn't, in the evening, it doesn't create any foot traffic, it doesn't create vibrancy, nothing. Either people go to work or they come home and that's it.
And this issue, you remember, came up, I know, Commissioner, you were on the board, but when we did the eight dash thirty G next to St. Thomas's Church, you remember the original application, the applicant wanted to put a first floor retail, small little coffee shop or something. And so it was reviewed, investigated, the town attorney, whatnot, and the determination was made that an eight dash thirty G can't accommodate a mixed use development. The reasoning being that it's, if it, if it has a non-residential component, and the non-residential component is getting the benefit of not complying with the zoning regulations, and that's not what the statute envisions. That's why we like this much better. We can have our mixed use, you can have your thirty percent if you choose affordable units, and yet you'd have a project that's not an eight dash thirty G that complies with your zoning regulations.
I would just add, again, devils are in the details, I would just say, I foreshadow issues probably with overflow parking. Those side streets are very narrow, a lot of people, a lot of the neighbors park there, that will be a big issue and.
We, we estimate there will be about twenty off-street parking there on this.
On the side.
Flash Road and Fairfield Place and Lindberg.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're expecting over parking on the post road?
We, we, I mean, we would prefer that people just walk and use bike. There's a bus line there. We would like to see a lot of foot traffic there, but there's going to be available off-street parking. And we're not going to stop, we're not going to ask the police commission not to have no parking sign there. We would welcome people.
Or Randolph? Sorry.
So two, two questions. One, I canvassed in this neighborhood when I was running, and I've got a good sense of that neighborhood. And they, they're, they're proud of the small scale. So I think in your, in your depictions, it would be helpful if you showed the scale of the neighborhood. So I think in your, in your depictions, it would be helpful if you showed the scale of the neighborhood. One of the questions came up, Mr. Braun was asking about the scale. So if you could show basically some street views, perspectives, at eye level, that would be helpful to communicate the scale, the setbacks. I know how to read drawings pretty well, setbacks, I think, achieve the break in scale that you're trying to accomplish. But just the, the, the depiction of this, if you could show it really at the street level, that would be helpful. Two, another thing that I always, people still think Fairfield's a New England town. I, I think we hopefully look more like Florida or New Jersey. And it's, we're sort of in denial about that, we aspire to look like a New England town. So the appearance of this, and we've had consistent comments on it, is not consistent with what people perceive this town to be, not what it actually is. You know, we, we do, we have predominance of strip development, unsightly development, you know, out of scale development. People do gravitate towards it will be more supportive of something that is a little bit more traditional. And I think that that will help, help change it. And I think it's a, it's a great building, but the context of it might need to be considered and modified a little bit with the materials. And, and Mark, you're a very talented architect, I've seen some of your projects, they're really good, but.
These are more residential homes, though. They are residential homes.
No, I know, but I'm just saying the feedback you will get.
Yeah, yeah.
Feedback you'll get will say that this, because we consistently get feedback on the eight thirty Gs that they're unsightly. That they're unsightly. So if something, just, just, that's a, let's say, just some feedback we receive all the time. And that's really more, more constituents than my personal opinion.
Yeah.
The, the other thing is, I think Commissioner Braun was asking a question, right now, is there any control runoff on the site? Stormwater, you know, to speak of?
No, that's the point, stormwater, no stormwater or water quality controls.
Yeah, and, and as I say, the lock, your lock coverage of the building is going to be, so your FAR is one point.
It's, it's about, we could call it one point six if you want.
Yeah, what's your lock coverage?
Seventy, what, seventy-one percent?
But that includes the parking?
No, that's included just building. Yeah, not, no surface parking.
Because on one oh, one oh one, it looks like it's significant.
Yeah, I mean, we have some green space all over, but. Yeah.
This one, looks like the lock coverage is.
Yeah, but it's, it's seventy percent, okay, a little deceiving, but seventy-one percent. And if you go one in the zone, a lot less, but if you go one more floor, once you landscape the cover of the ramp, then you got more green space. And then if you go to one level up in this part there, so if you go over this area, and if you look at where we have the apartment floor, that's also gonna be out of green, greenery space.
In terms of stormwater retention, right now, just to.
So we providing layers.
To repeat, there is no stormwater retention right now. How far are you from the Mill River?
Across the street.
Sort of across the street, but you know, we have, we have the, the old exit battery site and then Martels. No, more than two hundred. Yeah, I would say maybe, maybe a thousand feet, maybe.
But you're close.
Yeah, no, we're not too far.
Yeah, so, so an improvement of this sort will reduce stormwater runoff into some sort of water body.
We'll have to meet all the town requirements include which are.
Also with new landscaping, you know, the, the sidewalk along the post road, that's not improved, that would be improved. We would add, you know, more street trees. So we, we plan on providing an extensive landscape, not just.
Watch fortune.
We want the entire development to be beautifully landscaped.
Well, you're asking for feedback, and my feedback is that this is, will be a stark improvement. Some sort of site that's been underutilized, looked here for a long time. Look at that cigar store.
Right, call it.
Cigar store site. I think it would be dramatic improvement. I think the direction you're going in is correct, and I think your objective to really adhere to the spirit of eight thirty G, but modify that with mixed use is, is laudable.
Well, we appreciate that, we, and we take to heart all the comments that, that we've heard. I guess, I would, I'm, I'm not supposed to be asking questions. The only question that I, that I would, I guess, and I can talk to Mr. Went about this too, but I know you're in the process of reviewing your, you know, plan of conservation development and whatnot, and that's an ongoing process. So one decision that we'll have to make in terms of timing, as Mark alluded to it, is, you know, making whatever modifications are called for relative to design and things of that matter. Do we push ahead and push the button? And that, and that does leave the question of the zone, the zone extension. So I'm not expecting you guys to give me feedback on that tonight, but that is something, you know, I'd like to get a better handle on, because as I said, the whole underpinnings of this and the compliance that is built within the regulations does assume that there would, this, this project could be handled, could be rezoned to the, to the center design.
I was gonna say, yeah, I think this is exactly what we want. I just think it's too big and too close to the houses, too tall next to the houses. I think, obviously, if it was an eight F thirty G, you could do whatever you want. But it's not. So I think you have to take into consideration those neighbors, aside from the traffic issue and potential parking overflow issue. Because, you know, I campaigned in those streets also, and man, you can't get by sometimes.
I think Commissioner Randolph's comments, we, we heard yours and his as far as looking at.
There's a way of staggering it down, making it further away from the houses, adding more green space between the building and the houses, and more of a buffer. I remember when they were doing the dog tunnel, they, they kept adding more and more tall trees to, for the sound.
We can do that.
And so I, I would say more horizontal distance. And maybe if it could be reduced in height towards there. And then as far as the design, I'm partial to the New England look. I'm trying to, you know, preserve that New England look, that's, that's my personal theory. To me.
It's not a deal worker, too?
Yeah, pardon me? I, I think it could be for people that live there, because it's not just transitioning, you know, from downtown to the outline areas, transitioning from the houses to here. It's kind of an abrupt change in design from the little cigar store, the little duplex house there. And then changing from that, which doesn't take up much airspace, doesn't take up much land space, to a very large brick and gray building. It's just, to me, it's a little more corporate industrial park looking, and it would go better if it.
The architect's term is context.
Thank you.
Yes. Context.
Context, thank you.
Well, I mean, our context, I mean, if you look at it, they're story and a half, two, two, two and a half story residential, but they are in a residential zone, right? You're not, you're not gonna do your planning and require, you know, new development in the commercial zone to be two and a, I mean, you could, if you wanted to. But to be two and a half stories, I mean, if you, if you ask us to this, I think sometime what we miss is to have architect design fifty-story building that look like single family. They tend to be out of skill to me.
No, I'm not saying that, I'm saying the part that's closer to the houses, that should be the, the lower part, farther away, that's what I'm saying.
We, we tried to do that, I totally get it.
If there's a way, also, I don't know if there's an architectural way of having different design towards the back versus towards the front, don't know.
We certainly can look into that.
One other question, when you talked about the affordable housing, would that be permanent? Would that be like thirty, forty?
It would be in line with what.
State statutes.
State statute.
Would be forty years deperception?
Yes.
Would you consider making it permanent?
I, I think that's, that's a legal issue we'd have to discuss, that creates some.
I think we would go in line with the state statute. Now, you can, you can add more incentive for us if you like.
Yeah.
If you want, if you want, if you want more units, you want more affordable, of course, a bone. We, we're here, we're here, we want to give you stuff, and we all, what we hope to do is that we, we want to expedite, not expedite it, but we, we don't want to waste a lot of time, we don't, we want to work with you a little portion pool here and there, and then we get it through. Okay, we're not gonna hear big combative about something, you want more landscape, we're gonna give it to you. You want a little bit more setback, we're gonna give it to you. But there's certain things we won't be able to do, because we need a certain footprint.
And hopefully, we'll make your job a little easier, because as I, I think, Commissioner Harrison mentioned that, certainly, before we come in with the formal applications, we're gonna do the outreach to the neighbors. It'd be silly for us not to do it, you know, and, and, and we, we will, we will do that. And, and in the context of context, you know, we'll, we'll hear from them. We'll try to show in the same spirit that we're trying to work collaboratively with you, we want to work with them. And at the same time, hopefully, they will recognize that, hey, listen, the cigar store ain't doing me a great deal of aesthetic or benefit to my, to my property and my property values. I do live adjacent to a design commercial district, and looming out there is all these other development options that I don't think would be at all superior in terms of the benefits here to them. We'll, we'll try to sell that before we try to.
And the Mini Park I, I provided on purpose, create that buffer and to bring the folks in the neighborhood there. So we could have pushed the building even closer, but on the other side, we only have two hot ten feet.
I want also not to talk about outdoor concerts.
Go to Commissioner Pocaski.
That's a good violin. String quartet.
Um, I want to echo what many of my commissioner, fellow commissioners have said in saying that I, I commend you for bringing forward a very thoughtful plan to us. I, I really love, we've been considering extending the CDC, and this really for me helps me visualize what that means for our town. And I loved your explanation around why you brought this plan forward and why you didn't want to go the eight thirty G route. For feedback, some of the things that I really like, I love how you have concealed the parking in the dumpsters. It doesn't even look like there's parking underneath the building, which is something that definitely, I, I like that. I like the open space, the walkability that you've clearly encouraged here on site. And I think it's going to encourage more walkability in the whole neighborhood and, and up and down the post road. Just in, in having this type of design right there. Next to, like, Royal Britannia is right down the road, I think, right? And then Martels, obviously. So I think that will bring a really nice vibe. I hear the concerns that my, the fellow commissioners are saying with aesthetics. I personally like a modern feel, I also like a traditional feel. I'm wondering if on the top level, if maybe overhangs can be added over the windows or the doors to kind of create more of that homey, traditional New England feel. And if that might kind of satiate what we're, what we're looking for here with, with having more of a New England look. The parking question I had before Commissioner Collins asked about, and then my only question, and this is more of a logistical thing. So would this apply toward the eight thirty G moratorium, this thirty percent?
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely, because they'd be, they'd be qualified under the state statute, yes.
Okay.
Now, I, I, I don't want to keep asking you guys for more stuff, but we, if you want a few more affordable units, then the idea we, we doing small scale size units, five hundred to a thousand. So if you like our concept, and you like the mixture, and you want a little bit more density, we can come back, address some of your concern, you know, set the building back a little bit. And then if we can get a few more units, we totally okay build during this development in a way where we provide more affordable, we provide more plaza, we provide more open areas, we provide, make it flexible for our tenants to move in and out, and our, our commercial tenants, as well as our residential tenant. It's not too far from the train station, we even thinking what we might have maybe a shuttle or electric car there, if any of our tenants might need to move down there. We're gonna put bike parkings, not just in our parking garage, we want to put them on the sidewalks, on Fairfield, on the post road, you know, on Fairfield Place. Basically, the message is, we want you to walk, we want you to use your parking, and we want this to be a very friendly development. That's, that's, that's what, that's what we're trying to sell you guys. And for more like a faster process, guide us, where, where, what portion of the regulation willing to change, whether it's a zone change or a tax amendment, whatever the process that will help us get us there. Instead of going other direction or wasting time, you know. If you don't want to extend the zone now, maybe you don't want to extend the zone now, maybe you want to test the water with us and see the impact of some of those regulation that we're proposing, or tax amendment we're proposing, that you also considering, and see how it pan out in our project. I mean, it's a big site. It's a pretty big site, and some of our concept, you know, it being tested other places. And we, we want to try them here, because, for example, in Darien, I just got approved in the architectural review board after four years, eighteen units, they have public plaza that allow developer to increase density and height. That's one of their thing in their zoning regulation. Here, I don't have that interest, I think the public plaza, you know, I think the restaurant for us is key, not necessarily add another fifth story to the building. Currently downtown, you can do five stories, but you looking at changing to extend it, but reducing the number of story to five, to four. Totally okay with that. We totally fight, there are some challenges with the fifteen floor to floor height. But we totally, we get it, it will provide beautiful space that, you know, at the ground floor. We love everything that you guys been debating the past four years. We saying in summer, we can try to accomplish all of that here. If we try, you know, if we collaborate.
Seberg?
Yeah. First thought, I, I fully support this concept, I think it's great, I think it accomplishes what I call three-legged stool. Number one, and I, I do agree with Commissioner. Could you speak up just a little bit? I do agree with Commissioner Braun, at any degree that you can extend the, the, the green area on behalf of the neighbors, not knowing how the neighbors would, are responding to this concept yet. All I can say is, if, if I lived, my house would right here, this, I would much rather, rather than seeing this. I'd much rather. See that. Well, I also, so not only does the compliance are old to meet the state statute on portable housing, also, it also helps with our tax base for residential, having the retail, the restaurant, the retail. And my third leg, that three-legged stool is, I believe, when I look at this versus this design that, having been a former RTM representative, that this would better align with the safe streets ordinance, I believe, that the first selectmen's office is proposing pending approval from the RTM. It's the best. It was passed, it was passed. So I think it more aligns with that safe street ordinance as well. When I look at, I look at this, that doesn't align with the safe street ordinance in mind. So that's why I, I do very much in favor of this, this mixed use concept versus just being housing units, right? Those are my comments.
Commissioner Braun?
I was intrigued by something you mentioned, Mr. Andre, about green on the upper floors. What does that mean? Do you mean green roofs or?
Oh, so we, we would, we, we, some areas, we have some, where we offset the building back, where we have those balconies, so we want to have like landscape balconies, and at the very top.
Does that mean a landscape balcony?
Well, instead of just.
Putting the green space on the bedroom. The balcony is used by the residents, though, so by green space, what do you mean exactly?
It'd be like little garden, some have their little.
With the garden, they can use.
Oh, yeah, they could put their, we will design it so they can have their little garden there. Kind of provide the, if you look at one of our floors.
Because that is one of the green concepts that's, we're discussing in the plan of conservation. Because that is one of the green concepts that's we're discussing in the plan of counseling.
Like was it a box?
On grass, so then we like put a garden under.
For example, this is the upper floor. So this is covering our dumpster area. So this could be all landscape. So we would, we will provide this and then we can let them congregate here, but they can have garden. This is covering the walkways or retail is under here. So this.
What side of the building is this? Is that?
This is Fairfield Place. This is the post road. Uh, this is Langford.
Okay.
So we want to create, not only to provide indoor balcony, but we also want some greenery. That's in the first level. And then when we get to the fourth floor, the, the, well, above the third floor, we set in the building back where we can also add more additional greenery. So that's, yes. And then at the very, very top, if we do go at the very, very top, then we would probably do like some solar panels, some green outdoor spaces. Yes.
Any other comments, questions? Pocaski, or if you're a hand raise again, or is that from before?
Up to your hand.
Okay.
I'm all set. Sorry.
Okay. Um, I, I'll just add, I, I echo a lot of what has already been said. I am very supportive of this, uh, concept. Uh, for all the reasons that everyone else has already articulated, so I, I won't, uh, belabor the point. Uh, the only other thing I'll add on the aesthetics is on a micro scale, if you look at the cover image of the, the print app, I actually think that looks great on a small scale. I have no issue with that. I think the issue for me, uh, to the extent I have any is when you get, uh, when you apply that across a pretty wide frontage, it starts to get a little bit, I guess. So I don't, I don't actually think there's anything wrong with the design aesthetic in particular. I just think it gets to be a lot, uh, when you apply that over the whole project. So I don't know if there's anything that could be done, um, to differentiate, uh, the frontage of it, whether that's in this style or some of the other.
We can break it up a little.
That's, that's the only other thing I'll add, but I thought.
Texted massing.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. But I think it's a, a great concept and I, uh, I think very encouraged to see an applicant or pre-applicant, uh, proposing to go beyond what's required in terms of the affordability in particular.
Well, we thank you very, very much for your time. We are excited about this. We're glad to hear that you have interest and some excitement too, but we take the heart, everything we heard. And we will go back and, uh, hopefully have something for you to look at in the next, uh, few weeks.
No.
Next few months?
Okay.
I'm excited about that.
No, we, no, if, if, if you want to hold on to them and see when we come back.
Will they change that's why?
We're going to change. We're going to make some, yeah.
You'll be able to compare.
Yeah. We, you guys a lot of good input.
Thank you all very, very much. Okay.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Two minutes, Frank. Okay, if, if you felt one later, I'll, I'll take him at the end. Um, yeah. Okay, so, so next up is the public hearing on one tip, which you're having, you're just going to take a minute. Sorry. I'm, I'm. Okay, so our, our last item on the agenda is the public hearing for, uh, zoning compliance application of twenty-two Longlast Lane LLC for twenty-three unit residential development pursuant to section eight thirty-two of the Connecticut general statutes. Some design commercial district and residence B zones consideration from December twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Um, before we open it to public, I'll just ask the applicant, you know, if the applicant has any additional, uh, comments.
I, I have, if I just have two minutes with Mr. Green.
Point of information, where did we leave off? This has been a while, been nearly a month. Did he finish it?
Well, that's, I think that's the question that we were, I think we kind of were on the cusp of wrapping up traffic testimony, which I believe was last witness, but I think that's what Chair is asking his word if he's got.
Yes. Well, good evening. For the record, long time no see. Uh, I'm John Fallon, uh, representing the applicant here. Um, so I think at our last hearing on December twelfth, we had made our presentation. Um, my recollection is that you had heard from our architect, uh, our site engineer and in our, our traffic engineer, who is here again this evening, Mrs. Sopola. The, other than a summary, which I think would be premature, because I think you want to open it up to public comment at this point. Uh, the only other thing that I have that I've already submitted to Mr. Went, Mr. Went, do they have the, the Maritz? Okay. You'll recall, I can't remember if it was Commissioner Harrison or Commissioner Braun, but somebody suggested i- i- in, in terms of the ITE, um, denying that they, they, that, you know, was there any place that we, you know, could confirm that data with live counts? And we did that. Um, we went to the development, uh, at Maritz Place. Um, and we did in fact do counts. Steve, when were these counts done?
Done on Wednesday, December twentieth.
It's right here. They were done Wednesday, uh, December twentieth. And I'll give these to you all, make them part of the record. This is on the, the, the development at Maritz and Black Rock Turnpike.
How are they analogous, these two areas? But I, I think worse than that.
No, I think that, that was, this came to the issue of the traffic counts. In other words, you were looking to see whether or not the ITE data that we submitted, which basically said that the, the peak, morning peak traffic was twelve?
Nine and twelve.
Yeah. So in the context of the testimony, we provided the traffic report that based upon the applicable ITE standards would indicate that the morning peak increase was nine, uh, vehicles and the afternoon peak was twelve. I think it may have been you, Commissioner, but it may have been somebody else who said, well, those numbers seem a little low. Um, is there somewhere or some way you could do actual counts uh, that might verify or confirm that data? And that's what I'm giving you now. Okay? And basically, you know, what they show is that they're quite similar. Can you, Mrs. Supola, just come here for a second? With regard to this document, can you tell us, first of all, you took the counts and then you had to adjust based upon the number of units? Just walk the commission through, uh, what the counts revealed in terms of actual peak hour at this location.
Uh, sure. Uh, for the record, Steve Supola, senior traffic engineer at R C in Hanover. Um, we conducted a, uh, traffic count at the sixteen forty-five Black Rock Turnpike, uh, residential development. Uh, that development has a similar unit count, slightly higher twenty-nine units. Uh, so we counted the driveway and determined that, you know, generated a total of thirteen and nineteen vehicle trips during the morning and afternoon. Uh, we could, we, uh, uh, calculated trip rates based on the twenty-nine units of point four, five and point six, six, uh, per unit. We applied those same grades to our, those twenty-three units. And that calculation indicated that, uh, our development would generate ten vehicles in the morning and fifteen in the afternoon. So about one additional vehicle in the morning and three additional vehicles in the afternoon, which is considered consistent and within range for daily, uh, fluctuations, uh, with residential developments. So, and in addition, if you look at the, uh, the entering and exiting, uh, distribution ratios, they're very, they're almost identical. So it also confirms that, uh, during the morning, uh, uh, and afternoon, the same, uh, similar patterns of entering and exiting were found at the, uh, the Maritz, uh, developments. So this generally confirms that the IT rates are are very similar to an actual development in the town of.
You just did it on that one day?
Uh, correct.
What time of day?
Uh, it, it was, it was seven to nine, four to six, the, the peak hour of the, the roads. Uh, so, which is, uh, what we use for IT, the peak hour, the adjacent road, uh, trip rates.
And the original, the, the one that you did placed during COVID, the one that you did around Woodrow, right? Primarily during COVID.
Uh, no, don't, uh, those, um, do you mean the, the site traffic?
I'm seeing less SD something.
Maybe you should explain, I'm sorry, do you understand that this is?
No, I understand. I.
Trip generation.
No, I, I. Thank you. Thank you.
Do you mean the trip generation?
Yeah, they're right. Yeah, yeah.
Now that's, 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 that's from IT, that's from a book. So no, no problem. Um, are there any questions?
So, I'm sorry.
So the trip generation, you compared the proposed Woodrow.
We compared the I, the, the question arose at the hearing whether or not the ITE data, which is the Bible, it was reliable. And there was a suggestion about whether or not that data, those assumptions in the ITE document could be confirmed by actual on the street counts of a quote unquote similar development in, um, Fairfield. And that's what we did.
So the date, so you went to Maritz Place, which is sixteen forty-five Black Rock Turnpike? And you counted vehicles leaving at different times of day?
We, we, we counted, there, there was, there's a full movement driveway to Maritz and then there's, there's a, there's a full movement driveway to Maritz and there's an exit only driveway to Black Rock Turnpike, a right turn exit only, I believe. So we counted both driveways. So we, so we got the total volumes entering and exiting, uh, the, the site from seven to nine in the morning, morning peak hour and four to six in the evening.
And what date did you do that on, like?
December twentieth.
Uh, Wednesday, December twentieth.
Twentieth?
Hmm, yes. Yes, it's, 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 it's in the, the note and the source there, yes.
Oh, I see. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Steve. I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, I, I appreciate that and, um, there is one difference, I think, and I don't know if that would affect, um, from a traffic consultant's point of view. But I know Maritz Place, people do walk a lot. They go down to Stop and Shop, which is a direct line. I don't know if they'd be walking a lot out of this other place. I don't know where you'd walk to. You know, that makes a difference for trip generation.
This, remember, was to focus on peak hour. So I, no doubt, you know, I don't think it's most likely that somebody who's going to walk down to the Stop and Shop wouldn't necessarily be doing it during peak hours. We were, we were focused on the, the peak hour, morning and afternoon peaks, and that's, that's what this shows. So people could walk all times of the day, but it wouldn't affect necessarily the, the findings with regard to the morning and afternoon.
So trip generation, you're looking at basically commuters.
We're looking at the commuter peak hours, correct. People, uh, leaving to go to work and then returning home in the evening for, for this type of development of residential.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Steve. So, Mr. Chairman, to get back to, uh.
I mean, this is kind of fairly close to the holiday where people generally take off early. Do you think that would have impacted the trips?
One could speculate, but I wouldn't think December twentieth is so close to the holiday that.
It is actually, and in my world.
People can take a week off anytime. So you, you always have that variation in, in, in a traffic count situation.
Commissioner Randolph. Um, does, does the ITE have standards on days of the year? I believe they do. Just asking you a question. Does this, does the IT not have basically exclusionary weeks where they tell you not to count?
I, yes, and, 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 and also.
Call on that exclusionary week.
Uh, no, no, and, and, uh, Connecticut DOT also has that and, uh, uh, the tw- uh, December twentieth would not be considered a day that, you know, is off limits to counts. If, if we were submitting something to DOT.
Just as, uh, from my experience with traffic engineering, usually holiday times are busier. There's, usually they're busier. That's.
It, 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 it could be the opposite. It might be a little bit more active.
But. Ron.
Oh, no.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
So I, I, you, Mr. Chairman, at this point, I know there's public.
Few more questions.
Oh, wait, excuse me. Sorry, go ahead.
I, I, I just, I drove by the site and I saw about like ten cars parked on it. Now, what? I guess why are those cars there? Some of them look like they haven't moved since before the snowstorm. Are they, and where would they go once, if this product is approved?
We don't own the property yet, so we're not responsible for the property or what's parked there now. So I, I couldn't answer that question. I assume that the owner's using the property for some attention to parking cars, but we, we, we don't have any control over the property at this.
Okay. Then. Well, I guess I didn't get clear after the last hearing, uh, what, what is the distance between the proposed project and the neighbor, the neighbor on the hill? I got, I heard, I heard ten feet and I heard three feet at one point. Do we have?
Does anybody, Mr., uh, our engineer, Mr. Bauer could not be here tonight because as we speak, his wife is having a baby. So I think he's got a good excuse, but is there anybody, the question the Commissioner asked is, Mr. Mr. Jameson, can you come forward just so you get on the microphone? Mr. Jim Jameson, who you remember, our architect.
Architect. Uh, the stairwell is about three and a half feet from the property line. Uh, the rest of the building is approximately, uh, ten feet from the property line.
Do you know how far the house that Commissioner, uh, Harrison refers to is from the property line, the adjacent house?
I would say if it meets the current regulations for that zone, it's probably the area of twenty feet, fifteen to twenty feet, side guard setbacks. Not sure of that zone. I didn't check that zone, but it's probably in that zone. Per zone, the setbacks are tighter. We can actually have be zero on one side. So we could be zero on the right-hand side of the property, which we are not. And we could be twenty-five feet from the street. We're a little closer to the street on the left side of the property.
And that resident did receive obviously notice of the application.
Will you?
We, we would, if, in this zone, we, it says ten feet from, from that back property. The zoning regulations setback.
You have another question? I, I heard you starting the question.
I can yield to, to Commissioner Braun. Thank you. Thank you.
Are we, are we still on your presentation where we're asking questions of your experts or are you done?
I, I.
Well, you can ask questions anytime and, 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 you know, my, my, what I probably would do with the Chair's thoughts is I've committed, you know, I finished my presentation called my concerns. I haven't done my summary yet, which is important to do at some point because, you know, the last hearing was all the way back on December twelfth. But I probably would hold off on that until members of the public have a chance to talk. But as far as asking questions, uh, yeah.
Okay.
The only person who's not here tonight, as I said, because of his parenting obligations is our engineer.
Well, I, I had a question for him, but maybe the architect is, I'm not sure. Um, so, yeah, I was also concerned because I, I go off that way sometimes and it's extremely, it's almost like a retaining wall of ledge between the back of this property going up Woodrow to the first house on Woodrow. That's above this. My concern is that you'll be blasting, that honestly, it looked like that house could just cave in if you blast away those rocks right there. Um, so that was a concern.
I'm getting back, I couldn't anticipate us needing to blast.
We'll be dredging out everything there, right?
We can do it by hand.
There's, there's rock that is above grade. I would expect that we can chip it because we can pin the foundation to the rock. We don't have to excavate to forty-two inches below grade if we're on rock. We can actually pin that and the rock becomes, and it'll grow part of the foundation.
How close is the building to where that, that rock is practically on the boundary line? I mean, it's maybe ten feet from where it looks like the edge of the property is. I mean.
Just by way of, you know, recollection, what we said at the last hearing was, and, and I, I can reinforce this because I, I saw it in the client. We don't anticipate that we're gonna have to blast. We think that any rock removal that is required can be done on this site, small site, by hand. If it turns out that based upon a field condition, we have to blast. One, we would have to follow all of the, um, state and local requirements in terms of obtaining the proper permits and what have you. And secondly, we commit, and it could be a condition of approval, that if any blasting is necessary, that before blasting would be undertaken. We, we would give notice. w- we would give notice to all of the proximate neighbors and conduct at our expense pre- and post-blast surveys.
By survey, somebody did, um, there, there were test holes I saw on one of the plans.
I'm talking about a pre- and post-blast survey, where you, you, you.
Subsurface.
You literally hire a company, and the company goes in prior to any blasting in the proximate area, and actually examines the property, takes photographs of the foundation, the interior, what have you, and then, after the blasting is completed, that same company comes back and repeats the process, and inspects and takes photographs. That way, both the, the, the person who's doing the blasting is protected, because if there's a fissure in the foundation before the blasting occurred, they have the protection of saying, hey, my blasting didn't do that. On the other hand, the property owner is protected, because if there's a crack in the wall or somewhere else. So, that's a pretty standard thing, and, and I always recommend pre- and post-blast surveys, because it protects the adjacent homeowner, it also protects the developer.
I, I guess my question is, why does the building have to go back that far? Can't it be ended sooner, then you don't have to dredge up all that rock ledge, which seems to be a nice buffer to the neighboring yard? Also, I, I worry that if there's been no subsurface survey now, we don't know really what flows, or what, what's going on under the ground.
Again, we do not anticipate that we're gonna have to blast, and we're.
Not changing the geography right there.
All I can say is, what I've said is, where's the blasting, and respectfully remind everyone that this is an eight-dash-thirty-G application, and the, the legal standards are such that I don't think that speculation to blasting, which we don't feel we're even gonna have to do, rises to the level. I'm not trying to cut off the discussion, I'm happy to discuss it, but I think we, we've responded, and indeed, we've dialogued, as you'll hear before the evening is over, with neighbors, uh, we've reached agreement with some neighbors, and those agreements include the very provision for pre- and post-blast surveys that I've just articulated.
I, I don't recall, um, any session at the first meeting about dialogue, but.
Well, no, there hasn't been, that, that has occurred, and you'll hear more about that tonight.
So, um, so, the other question I had, which I don't know if you can answer or not, um, I couldn't find anything in the stormwater report about the level of groundwater right now, or the distance between the groundwater and the detention structures. I, I couldn't find that, do you, somewhere I saw that there were test pits, do we have that information somewhere?
We do, and the drainage report.
Find it.
I think the, again, I, I, I think before the evening is over, there'll be a mutual request that the hearing be left open, uh, as part of our agreement with, uh, some, some clients of Mr. Green, and he'll explain that at appropriate time. The point being, we can certainly get you that information before the hearing close.
And then, there was an email we got from Mr. Hurley today.
Yes.
Are you gonna address that on your own, or?
Oh, yes.
Oh, you were, so you're not, you're gonna address that now, or in your summary?
He's gonna address that in my, in my summary.
I'm allowed to ask questions in your summary.
You certainly, you certainly are.
Thank you.
Yes, just a clarification question, so, um, you're leaving the hearing open, could you identify the depth of the groundwater at your next presentation?
Yes.
But that's Kathy.
Water.
I'm sure that, but I, I asked them to get the groundwater.
Oh, thank you, okay.
I'm, I'm sure that, and if we're test hole done, that will tell us.
That may be in the.
We already revealed.
But I think that may be in the drainage report, but I don't wanna hold you. All right, so we'll make sure, the depth of the groundwater.
And make, it put more than the test hole, they didn't find relevant.
Okay, yes.
Uh, additional questions, or can we go to? All right, thank you.
Do you agree, Mr. Chairman, that I should hold off on?
We're gonna get to Mr. Hurley's.
You have questions on that?
I do not, but I just wanna make sure that.
We're gonna, I, I think, you have copies of that, I.
I have no questions, just wanna make sure that others.
I had questions, and I'm, I'm not sure if Mr. Hurley was planning to come in and address them.
Uh, Mr. Went, there are comments for.
Were there any, was he planning to come in too?
Well, it depends on what your questions are, I mean, let's, 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 I think, if we flesh that out, we can, if you've got particular questions, we can get the essence of those questions either remotely, presence of this. Yeah, I can't speak for his report other than having a copy of it.
Then we'll, we'll move to public comment, we'll hold the hearing.
I'm gonna hold off on my submission.
Okay, uh, we are going to start with, uh, folks in the room, is there anyone in the room?
I have a lot of papers. So, um, first of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity to present. Uh, my name is Steven Reisberg, I live up. Avenue, my daughter, my three kids, my, uh, oldest one walks to the bus stop on Woodrow. Unfortunately, being three houses down from Sixth Avenue, I know the stop sign, and the, uh, the project.
Speak up just a little bit, I'm so.
Subject being, um, the area very well, because I'm three houses down from, uh, I mean.
So, could, could, your name and address, please?
Steven Reisberg, Fifty-Nine Peace Avenue.
Excellent, thank you.
Um, so, I, I, I know we talked a lot about what's there at the property currently, it's used by Ward Jennings, Jennings Auto has about fifteen cars there, they rotate between what's there long-term, some with trees growing out of it, some are used by employees, um, some are used for, uh, mechanics. Uh, it's an eyesore, it'd be great to see something that's more reasonably appropriate in size, and affordable housing too, would be great as well. We know, we talked about the fact that there's three, that the unit should have three cars per unit per the current standards, but according to section thirty-G, that doesn't require, but it is something that we need to consider, because the surrounding area of, uh, Peace and Woodrow are, are very narrow. Last month, we heard from R S in Hanover, uh, Port of Sun by Gregory Del Rio, and who resides in Long Island. Part of that report, the whole focus on that report was the four hundred and seventy-two feet, approximately five hundred feet from, uh, Post Road, to that stop signs. It was a discussion, which I believe it was Catherine had raised the question, were there accidents, were there not accidents? So, the focus is, is five hundred feet.
Pass this through.
Yeah, please, and please put it into the. Yeah, I mean, I don't know how to submit it, so, yeah, submitting it. I'm also gonna be submitting the police reports.
Once everybody's had a chest look.
Yeah, so, this is from the transcript that you can get from, uh, YouTube, because from your seminar, it does it automatically. So, there was a question, babies have reported, there are at least three, there are at least nine tra- traffic crashes between twenty-one and twenty-three, twenty-twenty-three. So, are they wrong? This is pulled directly from the, uh, this is how it reads, theater, the crash repository, which is taken from, uh, taken from, uh, crash reports that are provided by the Fairfield Police Department, I can only go by what is provided by the D H T base. So, that is that, it's highlighted for you. So, what I did is, I went to the base, which is the Yukon Repository that he's referring to, this is what shows up. So, the stretch of Peace Avenue is about point-two miles in total, that includes the five hundred feet, which I think is point-one, and then the other point-one mile, which is where I live, and goes up to Sherwood, which nobody knows that even exists, Peace, and Peace actually connects to Woodrow with a street called Sherwood, it's only three houses there.
Sorry to interrupt.
Yeah.
The P's from, where the I ninety-five exit ramp on exit nineteen connects as a, as a stop.
This.
Peace Avenue there.
So, Peace Avenue is point-two miles, I think it's on the bottom of that sheet, it says point-two miles, so that's referring to Post Road, which is right here, uh, which goes up through here, this street is actually called Sherwood.
So, the accidents you're talking to are on what stretch?
So, that's a great question, so what I do is, I went to the source. So, these are the police reports, so I guess before I'll pass it around.
Can you explain what portion of Peace Avenue is on, or?
Well, um, I, they, there's a graph in each of these.
Yeah.
So, this one, for example, was the most recent police report, which was June twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three. Here's the diagram, as I said, not drawn to scale, here's Peace Avenue, here's Woodrow Avenue, here's the Sherwood connector, here's where the site would be. It's about, I don't know, twenty-five feet, give or take. So, these, I, they gave me a summary, which I'm obviously submitting, uh, I don't know why they didn't give me all the copies.
That's a summary of accidents?
That's summary of accidents, yes. They didn't give me all the copies, so what I did for you guys, I was like, did organize them. So, these are all the ones that are car, on that four hundred and seventy-two, uh, stretch, four hundred and seventy-two feet stretch, so, in deep water. So, you can see, like, again, here's P's, this is closer to Post Road, but you can flip through them, you guys can have them, again, they're on Peace and Post Road.
Could you tell me, you know, the four hundred slash five hundred foot stretch is from where P's connects to the exit ramp?
From the stop sign to Post Road, it's four hundred and seventy-two feet, it's five.
Stop sign is one where you're exiting, yes, away, and it goes into P's Road.
Yes.
Okay.
So, this is, so keeping in this order, um, each accident is about nine pages, that's what it is, but these are all the accidents are on Peace Avenue. This is the summary. These are the ones that they gave me that are on Peace Avenue, Post Road. So. So, one question about whether there's accidents, there are accidents here. This is a very dangerous strip. So, I'm submitting that for the public record, I'm also submitting another thing for the public record, which is also from the Yukon, uh, Department of Transportation, which shows twenty-fifteen to present, so it, it's a graphical depiction of accidents, lots of them, especially around that Peace Avenue strip where Ward Jennings has his mechanic, which, I don't know where those cars are going to. So, I know I'm kinda going quick, I can go slower if you guys need.
Excuse me, but I just didn't read her, what was the date on that last document?
That is from twenty-fifteen to, I printed it last week.
Twenty-fifteen.
Yes, so it is a lot of pictures.
Thank you.
So, looky, can I ask you a question about this?
Sure.
Thing that you submitted, it says, Connecticut DOT summary intersection crap, do you have things like this at the DOT?
Well, I had no clue, but I had to do some research, because I'm obviously concerned about.
Or did you create this?
Um, I snipped it, so it's press print, you know, you press print, but you can go on the website.
From the DOT?
Yeah, 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 I didn't, I printed it.
So, it's a, it's an aerial showing.
Yeah.
Peace Avenue, Kings Highway, Post Road.
Yeah.
With accidents.
Yes. If you click on it, you can see a date, I, I mean, I, there's a lot of there, obviously, to Mr. Attorney Fallon's point, it's twenty-fifteen. So, there's a lot, but there's a lot of accidents, there's all type of, you know, map there. So, they're very focused on this, you know, twenty, thirty, whatever the number of feet is, that's, you know, and there, if you go back to their, I don't have it in front of me, but their report is at the frontage between their, their side, right? So, the whole report covers the stop sign, which I know we talked a lot about, you know, is this stop sign people using it, or they're not using it? So, the police officer, Seth Jennings, there were two hundred and seventy-three traffic stop violations between two twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, twenty, sorry, twenty-nineteen to twenty-twenty-three. He said there are two hundred and seventy-three traffic stop violations on that stop sign on I ninety-five. There's usually a car parked there, uh, frequently, I would say, police officers frequently there. Why? A lot of people roll stop signs. It's very common there, so, uh, that's why it's also dangerous to be there. And I also wanna submit for the record too, which is, because I know some people are new on the board, so I think it's important. It was, uh, Town of Plan Commission's minutes of meetings, June thirteenth, and, uh, there was a discussion, which is your own minutes, but I think it's been submitted here in case this goes to Hartford or whatever, but it says, hey, the traffic, the, the results of the traffic study are questioned, uh, as it relates to the Berkeley Road property.
Which property?
Berkeley Road. Now, that was also done by Gregory Del Rio, R S Hanover, where you guys, you guys were here, obviously know, you questioned, you know, all this, you've questioned, were there accidents, were there no accidents, you know, and stuff like this.
Can I, can I ask him a question?
Yeah.
So, this thing that says F O I request, dated twelve twenty-eight twenty-three, who, who writing back and forth with Sergeant Jenkins of the.
So, there was a form you fill out, again, there's a lot of new information to me, but there was. There's a Freedom of Information Form that you can fill out, I attached the form.
But what, what is the area?
On the form was.
Okay.
The, the, that is the I ninety-five stop sign.
At P's Road.
Yes.
Those violations were at that stop sign from the exit ramp of exit nineteen?
Yes.
To P's, where it flows into P's Road.
Yes, two hundred and seventy-three violations.
During a.
I've here period. Even, you know, if he, if he's gotta do copies, it takes a. He gave me the copies, he received for us, he said, and you can see the thread, I said, forgot to include this, which was part of my Freedom of Information. He said, like, that's I can give you is two hundred and seventy-three traffic violations.
It's up.
Yeah. So.
No, it doesn't state specifically what the traffic.
Five years, no, it doesn't. He said, that is the best what he can give me.
It could be a seatbelt violation, could be a lot of things.
It could be a stolen car, because one of the police officers said that they look a lot of times there, because they like to see the, it's easy spot to read the plates, and they can see if cars are stolen, that's why they're there, and they don't pull over everybody, because they're looking for stolen parts sometimes. So, it could be anything. There's no other stop sign, though, on, there's no other stop sign at all on Peace Avenue, throughout Peace Avenue, except for that stop sign, so. So, that is a lot of information there, but I, I wanna, you know, in addition, we talked, we also talked a lot about, um, you know, these two thousand cars that come off, uh, during Post Road, during rush hour, so I think that's important as well, that there's, if you go back to this traffic study, that there was almost two thousand cars coming back. It's, it's funny, as you mentioned, the December twentieth, you know, is that a holiday week, uh, or not? I have a video, I don't know how to send it to you, I'm happy to pass my phone around, but, but it's great, because December nineteenth, I actually filmed two, I filmed the morning rush hour, and it took, uh, one car, two minutes to go five hundred feet to the stop sign, and it took another car, one minute and thirty seconds to go to the stop sign. Happy to submit to public record, I think I have to do a Google Drive, because it's, you know.
It's the best way to send.
I send a link into it.
It's not big a file it is.
It's like thirty, forty megabytes.
That's not gonna be emailed.
He said he has a Google Drive.
I have to put on a drive or something, I pass the phone around, whatever you guys.
I mean, if you could put it on a flash drive or something.
Yeah, or something that we could. So, that goes two minutes for one car to go five hundred feet, another car to go one minute and thirty seconds. So, there's a lot here about the dangers, right, but there's still more to kind of cover. So, if, if I'm all caught up on the accidents, I just wanna talk about the surrounding area, do you guys have any questions more on accidents and this data? You don't have to ask a question, I just didn't know, I have, I'm going quick.
Lot of data, um, have you? Any of this data reviewed by a qualified, uh, traffic engineer or professional?
All the data is, uh, in the public domain, was, was not, all the data was, no, but all the data is coming from public documents, about public information, which should have been, I would think, in the report done by the, by the person who does an enhanced traffic study, should have included the tra- should include the accidents in there.
So, uh, I'm just trying to understand, your, your concern is that there are high incidence of accidents?
The area is, technical term, probably a, a mess. You get off of the highway, and there's people running through stop signs, or they're sitting in a complete bumper-to-bumper traffic. Then you get further down, if you talk about a, a dangerous intersection, it's, that's my concerns. So, what we have here, I'll make a copy of two, what we have here is screenshots of Woodrow and Peace Avenue, showing a couple of different things, one is there's already existing stop sign, there's already a sign, these are from Google, because I think there was a comment about the neighbors making up their own pictures. So, these are coming directly from Google, if you go to your Google phone, you can get the pictures and download them, Sam can do snaps. So, there's a speed limit sign of twenty-five with a slow children sign, right next to it, one is the north side, one is the south side, so both parts of Woodrow already have a sign that says, hey, people are going too fast, slow children. There is a picture of the blind side, blind side on Sherwood Place, there's a picture of the lack of sidewalks, which you can see that there's no sidewalks, except for, I think, two or three houses. Street on Woodrow has three sidewalks, three or four sidewalks, I believe, Woodrow has three, three or four houses with sidewalks. Most of them are one-car driveways, so there's cars on both sides of the streets, the, the traffic person, I forgot his name. So there's cars on both sides of the streets, the, the traffic person, I forgot his name, but he did sit at the street, which are called Woodrow Narrow. If you go up P's, it's already, it's actually even more narrow than Woodrow. So you can see that from here as well, so that you can't put four cars in a row, physically you can't, I think it was twenty-six feet, I think is what it was across. A car is six and a half D, six and a half times four is twenty-eight feet mathematically. It's twenty-six feet, you can't, I mean, you can't fit four cars at the same time, so you can't have existing cars on both sides of the street parking.
And these pictures are attached here, January first email to TPZ.
Yes, 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 which, and then also I know there was conversations, they're very, very principled. But anyway, there was also conversations about whether or not it was, you can cross a post road, so you can also see that you can't cross a post road, there's no existing walkway, there's no way to. Very strange, because there's actually a bus stop on both sides there. So you do actually have people crossing illegally, especially those who work on maple wood, are actually frequently crossing illegally. So, um, that's because they're coming by bus. Um. Do you have a copy of that? Of that?
Is this an extra copy?
Yeah, sure, copy, yep.
That's the email, that's already in the record, that there's, is that the email that had the attached photos?
Yeah, yeah, it wasn't posted up, but it's fine. So. Just let me catch up, I want to make sure I have, hopefully those covered. Yeah, so that kind of covered, yes, so that covers that, so, so basically. I think this materially shows, in my opinion, that the Haras Hanover report is insufficient for the TZP to conclude that it could, that it concludes, that it can conclude. That there's not already an existing threat to pedestrian safety, including the dog walking place, the kids who have to walk to Accord or on Woodrow to get their buses. Um, the people who are walking off the buses, walking original, illegal to P's Avenue. So when you have all these abundance of cars, we have construction, which we never even talked about, these large construction vehicles, this is not a self-contained spot. It's very, very small, it cannot handle, if you look at it, I would imagine, I'm not an engineer, but I would imagine, you physically can't keep all the bulldozers and all the other stuff on the property. Maplewood is different, maple wood is very self-contained, this is not, this is literally gonna stop and impede traffic flow as it's being built on a frequent basis. Let alone when it comes out, you're not efficient amount, sufficient amount of parking, they've already established that it's supposed to be three per unit, we know that there's a problem where Jennings, who's selling the property. Who owns the property, is selling the, where his car is going, and that there's already not enough. Ability for Woodrow and P's Avenue to absorb these cars. And they can't fit cars going both ways. So. I, I mean, I would really ask you guys to consider this. Um, so definitely think it's a major safety issue. It already is a safety issue.
Sure enough, Mr. Redford, I, I just wanted you to know on your experience and your diligence and your commitments and the P's and better. Um, I want to summarize maybe some of your concerns. So, I think, one of them said that, and I'm looking at this right here, that the intersection of P's and. I, I think, what's, what's the name of the side road? Or what, or what, no, no, Woodrow, yeah, P's and Woodrow, that intersections of concern to you, is that?
If you, it's right, yeah, definitely is a concern. The, there is no stop sign when you come off King's Highway, King's Highway itself cannot support cars, um, there's no parking there, obviously. So, so you come off of there, there's only a stop sign on Woodrow, and what happens is you're coming quickly down that turn if you're coming off P's. So if you have cars, thank God, thank goodness, it doesn't appear that there hasn't been an accident in a while in there, but you're, you're both coming at a very quirky turn.
It's, it's a, it's a, it's not ninety degrees.
It's definitely not ninety degrees, and it's hard to tell whether or not the building would.
I'm just trying to summarize what, what you told us here today, because I think there's some good takeaway, so that, basically, the, the traffic configuration at P's and Wood, Woodrow is a concern to you. Second is, um, part, basically off-street parking. Um, right now, you're concerned that if there's double-loaded off-street parking on. It's this, not, no, no.
Woodrow and P's.
Woodrow, but, um, what's the other street, I don't see it here, not King's Highway, not P's.
Sherwood Lane?
Sherwood, yeah.
Yeah.
Double, double-loaded parking on Sherwood, um, may be a concern?
So, I mean, this is already on the public records map, but yes, but over here, there's a blind spot. So, but you're asking about here, this is King's Highway.
Yeah, but, um.
Here is Sherwood Lane, this is Sherwood Lane.
Where's your concern with, uh, parking?
So there is, the, the part, the problem is the parking here.
Yes.
It's not an independent thing, right? These are very two small strips, so right here, there's a hill, so I'm, uh, I answered.
Halfway up Woodrow?
Halfway up the hill on Woodrow is a hill, it's downhill, so you can't actually see the cars if they're coming for you. When you throw in more cars up here, you're creating a parking issue where people have to drive in the middle and they're head-on traffic, a blind spot can create more of a concern. Similarly, on P's, there's another blind spot over here turning onto Sherwood because it's not a ninety degree.
And that's because of the on-street parking.
That's bec- that's because of the on-street parking and it's narrow, narrowness is the issue, yes.
I know, yeah, my ears messed up, so the on-street parking, the, the traffic intersection, and then the sidewalks. Those are three things I heard you.
And, but most of all is the people who walk. Yes, I mean, we forgot about that, like, but kids and other people's neighbors' kids who have to walk to the bus stops, who don't have a sidewalk, when you're talking about the narrowness. The dog walkers and the dog walking company that is actually next to this building.
Right, so, so here's, there's. Issues that are related to this development that may or may not be contributed by this development, and then there are issues that exist in the neighborhood. And we need to make sure we distinguish between those two things, but perhaps there's an opportunity to address. Some of the issues not necessarily directly related to the, the, the building that are existing in the neighborhood, such as the inconsistency of the sidewalks.
Yes.
Yes, correct, so, so intersection at P's and Woodrow, double-sided parking, and then the discontinuous, discontinuous sidewalks, those are three things I heard. Probably said something else that I didn't catch.
Yeah, only five, only five homes have sidewalks. Um, the, the stop sign, I think, that there were two hundred and seventy-three traffic violations and accidents. There's several accidents, yeah, I think, I don't know if there was something else that you didn't think and I missed.
I just wanted to make sure we, we syn- synthesize some of the information.
Basically, it's not the safest area as is, as I think he, Mr. Fallon referred to it as a bucket, that's. I mean, there's a lot of stuff in this bucket right now. If you, if you have a bucket, you need to either add foundation to support the bucket, you can't just throw something into that bucket and hope it doesn't keep overflowing. Because clearly there's a pattern of problems. Otherwise, all this stuff would not exist, all this public. Yes.
Um, would you be? You know, I think at the beginning of your remarks, you said you would be, you were happy to see something at this location.
It's an ugly sight, and talking to neighbors on Woodrow, it's ugly.
Right, so would you be? You know, would you be, would you, I guess, would you accept this kind of project if it were scaled back a little bit?
I, I, I mean, that, that's a, that's a wide range.
That's right.
Yeah, I mean, I would just say that's a very wide range, the, the land could support a unit, two units duplex, obviously, and it can obviously, um, physically. Not surroundingly support what, what, you know, they have presented, there, there should be some type of middle. So.
Oh, I had a question, I'm sorry. In, in your email of today. You said.
Yes.
The traffic sensor had fallen down for a day or two. But then you said the traffic sensor. Um, the traffic report did not say exactly where it was, it said it was on P's Avenue, east of Woodrow. To capture speed and volume on, from May sixteenth to May twenty-second, twenty twenty-three.
I recall, and he's here, so you guys can have a ask questions. So I recall, and my wife vaguely recalls, that there was a, there was a sensor that was.
Did you just talk to us?
Yeah, there was a sensor that was posted, uh, on one of the telephone poles, um, when you come off the stop sign. That there was a sensor there.
Stop sign from I ninety-five, Exit Ninety, to P's Road.
Yeah, there, there was a sensor there, because again, we live on P's, so we always turn there. So there was a sensor, and then there was a day, a couple of days or a couple, or several hours, maybe overnight, where the sensor was on the ground, on the floor. I can't tell you the dates, it was kind of like a nothing thought. I don't know if it was the same dates of, of the week of the study and, and the, and Haras Hanover extrapolated the data for the weekdays, I don't remember when it.
How long was it down?
Uh, it was overnight, maybe.
Very far, this is a quick. Yeah, I, I don't want to interrupt this, but, but he's right, there, I, I just talked to Mr. Supola, there, there, one of the sensors broke. They went out the next morning, they replaced the sensors, and they started the council all over again. So the, the dates you have in your traffic report, I think it's May sixteenth to May twenty-second. That commenced after the sensor was repaired, or, or replaced.
Was the sensor at the stop sign?
Whatever it said in the report, I'm not sure.
Please.
The, uh, the sensor was, um, along, um, P's Avenue, along the side frontage, so just east of the Woodrow intersection.
So was that up by the stop sign?
It was along the side.
Between the stop sign and.
Where, it was, it was between the stop sign on the ramp and Woodrow, along the side frontage where we're proposing our drive.
So vaguely in front of the Indian restaurant, give or take.
Uh, no, in, in, in front of.
Right, your property, okay, so it was in front of the bacon line.
Thank you.
Thank you. So my memory was right, I didn't remember the hour, so, so something remembered.
And as far as speed. Um, our, our chairman asked this question last time, I'm sure Tony Fallon will pick it up, but I wanted to know what your observations are, I saw it even with the neighborhood. Um, they came up with an average speed of twenty-four miles an hour, the posted speed limit is twenty-five miles an hour. Our chairman had asked a question, what about cars idling, because you pointed out. Either stopped, uh, because it's backed up all the way from the post-road traffic light. Or they're trying to get through down there, and maybe that's why people are, police are stopped at that stop sign to catch people that are ramping up to get down to the green light, I don't know, but. Um, does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, look, people, look, I mean, people who frequently speed there.
By speed, you mean going over twenty-five miles?
By frequently, frequently, frequently go over twenty-five miles an hour. Um, there's, people do want to make that traffic light, just once you can see from that stop sign, you, it's a clear stretch. You can see that traffic light, whether it's red or whether that's green, or whether you want to make that light, and it's only five hundred feet. Um, if you think about it mathematically, because that's how I think. You've got about roughly twenty-five percent of the cars are going very, very slow, probably in single digits, and you're averaging twenty-four. It means that the other seventy-five percent are getting a benefit from those cars going really slow, that's the only way you get to twenty-four. Because a lot of cars are going very, very, very slow.
So when there's a red light, no one's speeding because they see a red.
I mean, it depends, because there's, sometimes you're just stuck, like you just literally.
There's a backup.
It's such a backup, and then people are speeding because annoying cars can get through, but, um, but, but you mathematically, you, you. In order to get to twenty-four miles per hour and a lot, and, and twenty-five percent of your population is going in single digits, the other seventy-five have to be going over twenty-five miles per hour. Because that's how it works, so that's how free flow works, so, I mean, you understand what I mean, so like. So, I mean, the free flow has, is really important here because the cars are speeding frequently, that's why there's two hundred and seventy-three violations, um.
So you're saying the average doesn't make sense, does not make sense in an area where. It's not, you're not just taking an average of people driving down a road, you're taking an average of people who would sometimes might be stopped because they're backed up at the light down below. Or other times they might be speeding to catch a light.
Yeah, and then the other thing too is when we're talking about the distance between, you know, that stop sign and where the proposed location is, and you're talking about putting a traffic sensor right there. If people stop. And unless you really floor it, you're not going to typically hit twenty-five miles per hour in that short two-hundred-feet window. So you're already plumbing out speeding, the cars are actually probably speeding when they get to, to the other turn. Where they're either going onto King's Highway, or they're speeding to get to this, to the traffic light, that's where a lot of speeding is happening.
Towards the bottom.
Towards the bottom too.
Okay.
Yeah, which is probably why it's more accidents.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else? I figured I'd get you guys that, you get on December nineteenth. Others in the room who wish to be heard on this item? Is there anyone who is joining us remotely who wishes to be heard?
We have an Alex, um, Ruda, who would like to speak?
I'll wait, let's, let's, uh, finish with the folks who are in the room first. Good evening, uh, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the commission, staff. Uh, my name is Joel Green. I practice law in Bridgeport with all offices of Green and Gross, it's my pleasure. To hear from you this evening on behalf of the Sasquatch Association for Southport Improvement. And Elliot Zivin, who is, uh, with the, uh, this evening. Uh, and Mr. Zivin resides at one ninety-eight Southport, Southport Woods Drive. So, uh, my clients have concerns, uh, they have expressed concerns with respect to the proposed development. Putting its size and its appearance, uh, the adequacy of onsite parking and safe particular access to and from the property. Uh, in order to address those concerns, we have, uh, engaged in a dialogue with the applicant, twenty-two Lunglots Lane. Uh, there's been a dialogue, uh, with Mr. Coco of, uh, the applicant, along with, uh, members of the board of the Sasquatch Association. And with Mr. Zivin, uh, with the assistance of counsel. And we've had, uh. Two face-to-face meetings, and Attorney Fallon and I have been, uh, working, uh, back and forth over the past six weeks or so. Uh, regarding the proposed development. We have reached, um, an agreement in concept. Uh, that, um, addresses many of the concerns that we have expressed, that my clients have expressed. And I have a statement, and I, I'll just review those, um, and I have provided a copy of the statement to Attorney Fallon and his client. And the, again, this is conceptual, but the settlement that, uh, we're working on. Um, includes the following. That the building plans shall be revised to reduce the number of units to twenty units. By eliminating three one-bedroom units in the building. Two, uh, a robust and abundant landscaping plan shall be agreed upon, that shall be planted on the west side of the building. Uh, but not in front of the building in order to preserve the critical sightlines that you've been, uh, you've heard quite a bit about, uh, this evening. Uh, there is a second driveway along the eastern boundary of the property. The use of that driveway shall be restricted at all times, for use for deliveries and trash and refuse pickup only. Uh, the consulting engineer for the applicant has prepared, uh, a scale drawing. Uh, that demonstrates, that will demonstrate that the driveway, um, site distance is satisfied. Such that the driveway provides safe access for delivery vehicles using it. Now, I drafted this document, um, this evening. And, uh, in the meantime, I have received a drawing from Mr. Fallon, but I haven't had a chance. I just received it, uh, about twenty minutes ago. Uh, and I've also received the document, Mr. Wet was good enough to forward Mr. Hurley's report. But I haven't really had a chance, I read it briefly, but I haven't had a chance to review it, nor discuss it with, uh, my clients nor our traffic consultant. But, um, the applicant has indicated to me that, that, uh, that drawing indicates. Safe site distance. Subject to review, so for the moment, I'll take the applicant at their word. Uh, four is that the building shall be redesigned to reduce its bulky appearance. By redesigning the third floor in a manner to be agreed to by the parties. And when I say bulky appearance, I don't think the applicant concedes that, and that's just my client's interpretation. But, in any event, the applicant has in good faith agreed to redesign the third floor of the structure. For, uh, my client's review. The applicant shall change the color of the exterior of the building to a shade of gray to be agreed to by the parties. Uh, the applicant shall comply with state and local regulations for blasting if any is to be conducted. And upon approval of this application. As agreed, uh, pursuant to this settlement and at the expiration of any appeal period. The applicant shall promptly file and pursue with due diligence, an application to the police commission. Seeking to obtain stop signs at, uh, two intersections, the first is the intersection of P's and Woodrow, so it will be on P's Avenue. And if I could just, uh, expand on that a little bit, what, uh, just for clarity. And I, I think the commission, uh, understands this, but just for the benefit of the public. At present, when you exit I ninety-five and come to P's Avenue. And you're looking to your right at the building that had Cora Mandela in it, and now has the, uh, dog grooming building. P's Avenue actually, uh, runs to your right, up sort of, off to your right, and then sweeps in front of you. It continues on along the front of the building with the dog groomer, along the subject property, and as. and as I, I think the commission recognizes, it continues to, uh, on to Route One. Uh, the first stop sign that we are hoping, uh, the Police Commission grants would be a stop sign on Peace Avenue where it meets the intersection of Woodrow. And the second, uh, stop sign we would hope to see would be a stop sign on King's Highway West, as you're eastbound on King's Highway West and you come to Woodrow, there would be a stop sign, uh, there that stops eastbound traffic, and, uh, my clients had, uh, significant concerns, because at present, and I think as you've heard from the public, and I think as this commissioner, where what's happening now is when traffic is not backed up, uh, cars tend to go, come very quickly off of the highway exit, they go straight, and frequently, if, at times when they see cars stopped at the light in front of them, the preferred path is to take a right and a left, and the way those intersections line up, you end up entering into the eastbound lane of King's Highway as you sweep right and kind of do that S-turn, you end up in the eastbound lane, which we believe is a dangerous condition, and we believe, but, uh, we look forward to sharing, uh, our concern with the Police Commission and hope that the commission sees the wisdom of installing stop signs to avoid, uh, that, what we think is a dangerous condition, uh, so, the parties join in requesting that the commission hold the public hearing open in this matter, in order to enable the applicant to provide, uh, Sasquatch Association and Mr. Zivin with a revised landscaping plan, together with a revised floor plan and elevation drawings, confirming the reduction in units as well as the, uh, redesign of the exterior of the third floor of the building, or, and exterior paint samples or conceptual drawing for review and approval, and I, I had added to this, um, scaled traffic drawing confirming the safe sightline distance, and we'll take a look at that, and we'll also look at the Hurley letter, and, uh, we fully expect in good faith to be able to agree, uh, on all of these matters, but if for any reason, and in the unlikely event that we are unable to reach, uh, you know, final agreement on these points, then the parties reserve any and all rights they have, without prejudice, to appear before the commission with their respective consultants to address the merits of the application. And lastly, we want to thank the commission for your generous patience, and for really digging in on this matter, you've asked a lot of great questions, and I don't know if you have questions for me right at this moment.
Commissioner Bronn, um, the three units that would be coming off, would they be the ones facing the uphill portion?
We haven't determined that yet, but we certainly could take that into consideration.
Yeah, you could move it back a couple.
And it goes to the question you raised.
I fairly capture our agreement, as, as I fully expected that you would.
The only thing that I'd want to just, again, I think the commission is well aware of this, and I, I, on, on the last point, which is, upon the approval of the application as agreed pursuant to this, we will promptly file and pursue due diligence and application to the Police Commission, we don't want to fall in the quagmire, where based on the case law, you cannot approve an application subject to the approval of another commission, so the way you'd have to, or you, we, we'd ask that you'd articulate that if you overall approved the project consistent with these agreements, is what we just said, that we would go to the Police Commission, we would in good faith seek their approval of the stop signs, I, you know, I think, I, I can't guarantee what they would do, but I just wanted to point that out.
I have one correction from Mr. Zivin, and he says redesign the fourth floor, and that's assuming that we call the first floor parking.
Right.
But it's the third residential floor, the fourth overall floor of the structure for clarity.
The top floor.
Top floor.
Top floor, which gets.
And, uh, look, uh, we recognize the, the need for affordable housing and, uh, and the good work this commission is doing on that, uh, but, uh, also, uh, we have concerns about significant public health and safety issues, and we're, we're trying to work through that.
Commissioner Randolph. So could you just, um, repeat what the current number of units are, current number of affordable, and the proposed number of units, proposed four.
Right, right now, we have twenty-three units, based upon the thirty percent factor that would yield seven, uh, affordable units, uh, we have agreed to reduce it to twenty by eliminating three one-bedroom units, that would then reduce the affordable calculation to six.
And for the purposes of my clients, look, we are not, we, we'd be pleased to see more affordable units in the building, we understand the economic challenges for the applicant, uh, we, it's for us, it's about the health and safety of the building, and the driver for us in reducing the number of units was to reduce the number, the, the parking ratio basically, because there's thirty spaces, and thirty spaces.
Unchanged.
So, we're reducing, we're gonna have thirty units serving twenty units instead of twenty-three, and that, that, that was the driver for us, honestly.
Commissioner Harrison.
No, I would just say, it, by the way, it's great to hear, um, when the two opposing parties can come together and find some common ground. You know, seven affordable units is completely, is completely upending this entire neighborhood, and, you know, I take great pause from what the neighbors said in letters, and I am very interested to hearing what they say on this, you know, compromise of sorts, so while I think this is good, and that will be the details, but I, I'm very interested, because this, they have raised significant issues that I'm really concerned about.
Understood.
You recognize the need for affordable housing, that's something we all take very seriously.
And, and I, I, I take, is it, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Respert, Mr. Respert, yes, I mean, I recognize his concerns, I will address them at the appropriate time, but I'm also pleased in the context of doing many of these applications, uh, you know, that, uh, so many neighbors did receive notice, and, and not only with Mr. Green, others, I mean, but, we, we think we've done our part here to be constructive, and, 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 and not only with regard to this agreement, um, but just generally, and I think it reflects tonight, and, and so I hope you'll take that, but I, I don't discount Mr. Green's comments, and I'll address them at the appropriate time.
Commissioner Randolph. Yeah, and, and, um, just, uh, I, I'm very glad that you've renegotiated and reached a resolution, I think Mr. Respert raised three issues that we, we've discussed, um, I think two of those you've partially addressed, and the third one I'd ask you to also address, so, the first one being the, the, the traffic, and I would, uh, encourage you to hire a professional traffic engineer to determine the best traffic, um, stopping measures, rather than going to the Police Commission. Uh, the Police Commission, to the best of my knowledge, does not have traffic engineers, but, I, I just don't, I don't want to all of a sudden create another problem.
Right.
So I would just encourage you to do that, it's up to your discretion, uh, the second thing is parking on the s-
Sorry.
Parking on the street, um, if you could also, I've, I've heard, and I've, I've familiarized myself with this neighborhood, um, could you also ask whether there'd be consideration to have parking on a single side of the street, uh, or just some other mitigating factor to avoid any congestion, uh, on traffic, so.
Can I, I, I just interrupted your train of thought.
Let me get the third one, and come back to it, third one is sidewalks, um, there's discontinuous sidewalks, if you could, um, uh, make a commitment to work with the neighborhood to perhaps extend the sidewalks beyond the boundaries of the property, if, and I know that's a very difficult thing to get agreement on, but if you could make an effort to do that, uh, to, again, address Mr. Respert's questions, uh, and if you really would. And this is well beyond, I know, Mr. Respert, I, I, as I said, I familiarize myself with this neighborhood, the crossing the post road is death-defying, and people do do it, um, if there, that's an issue that somehow, and, and that's a reach by asking that, because it's well off the boundaries of the site, but if there's some way that that could possibly be considered, studied, addressed, uh, that would be something I would ask you.
So, so we have a traffic consultant who will, and our concerns were safe vehicular access to and from the site, and he'll look at the drawings that the applicant has provided.
We can dialogue with Mr. Supol, and, uh, we're also concerned about the speed of traffic and stopping traffic, and, and again, avoiding, uh, collision situation, and, you know, to the extent that this mitigating any impact this project may have on that. And as I was listening to, uh, Mr. Respert speaking and talking about crossing Route One there, and there's a bus stop there, I think maybe we should be, as a town, and potentially the state with Route One focusing on creating a safe pedestrian way there. But, but we can undertake that as part of this, I think that the comment is extremely well-taken, but, you know, that's gonna get you on the state road, I mean, so, I, I, I don't know, I mean, the, the two, two things, Commissioner, that I was gonna say, um, we agree, you know, that we both have expert traffic engineers, we can look at what we're assuming here to be the proper request to the Police Commission in terms of the signage, and make sure the traffic engineers say, yeah, that's right, so I agree with that. The two-side parking is a problem, and, and the reason that's parked a problem is that is within the purview of the Police Commission. In another life, I sat on the Police Commission for nine years, and I was the chairman for three. The only way they would even consider elimination, restricting of on-street parking in a neighborhood like this, is if the neighbors, or at least a substantial number of the neighbors petitioned for it. And in my experience, and I don't know if it's still the same, but I bet it is, if eight people on the street petitioned to have parking restricted on one side of the street, the other eight people are gonna show up and say, what are you kidding, that's why I park, my friends come over, we do this, so I'm just being honest with you on that. As far as the sidewalks go, obviously, we're going to, you know, extend as our site plans, and we're gonna create sidewalks there. Um, the, the, the other issue, the issue of whether or not the town would want to, uh, e-extend these sidewalks, it seems to me that would be a very prudent thing for them to do, we certainly would be willing to work with the town on that, but that's, again, a town initiative.
I vote, um.
Because surprisingly enough, some people don't want sidewalks in front of their house, because they're worried about liability shoveling issues, believe it or not.
Along those lines, um, there, you, it would be worthwhile to look into the details within the complete streets plan, as well as the South Park Connectivity Project, which is doing something with sidewalks, I don't know if it's right here, but it's somewhere in that neighborhood. I, I don't know where it stands with both of those.
That's a good point, yeah. So those are my, my, my only comments on Commissioner Randolph's, you know, excellent comments, and I'll elaborate on those. I just find, I've, I've had nightmares with eliminating on-street parking for the Police Commission, because it always creates a little mini civil war in the neighborhood.
Peter Harrison.
Point of information, so, I, I know that we're not voting tonight, the public hearing will continue, so, will you be submitting revised plans that we?
I mean, the, the intention would be, if you concur, that prior to the hearing continuing two weeks from tonight, we would submit jointly a revised landscaping plan satisfactory to all the parties, and a revised architectural plans, um, addressing the modification to the, the building and the elimination of the three units. And, well, and, and if, if, if Mr. Green has any comments on the sightline drawing, but we would submit that as well, because that just demonstrates that we meet the, uh, SSD requirements for that low-volume used driveway, which is only gonna be used for deliveries, so that's kind of what I would envision doing, and then the question would be, I'd probably just for the sake, continuity, save my submission for that, my submission is about fifteen minutes, it's not gonna be that long, rather than they'll do it now, and then we're gonna meet again, but you tell me.
Yeah, I think, I think that works.
So that's what I see as on the agenda for, for the next meeting.
Mr. Chairman, if I may ask, Mr. Russell, do you anticipate that, um, that that could be accomplished for the, the June twenty-third meeting, is that your intention?
January twenty-third, sorry, absolutely.
June.
I, I say that.
June, it's January in my head, but.
Wait a minute. But Mr. Jameson, who we're putting on the spot, who's gonna have to revise the architectural plans, wha-what, what, what do you think is reasonable?
A month.
Okay.
So, when is the meeting February?
February, uh, it's, I'm, just in terms of the, our, our deadline to render decision on this application is March the second.
Right.
Well, so, there, there's some time, but I don't want it to be so time pressured that the commission is in the position of having to hear it and render judgment simultaneously, so, so the, it sounds to me that the twenty-third is not a reasonable expectation to have this buttoned up.
No.
Asking for the purpose of scheduling other matters that we might hear instead, rather than not being finished, being ready to proceed with this matter. The, the, the February dates are the thirteenth and the twenty-seventh, there's no meeting between the twenty-seventh in our deadline to act. So if we were to conclude the hearing on the thirteenth of February, and the commission will have the subsequent meeting, which would be the twenty-seventh of February to deliberate, so, is it a reasonable expectation that the revisions can, can be potentially rendered to everybody's mutual set, to the party's mutual satisfaction by the hearing date of February the thirteenth?
Mr. Jameson, and that, and not putting you on the spot, but, but that would mean we would, we would need to, to get the revised plans, you know, to, to, to Mr. Green and his, and his clients, probably three, four days, at least a week, preferably in advance.
And, and that, you don't necessarily have to answer that nowadays, I just.
Do that.
I just need to confirm that the expectation is that we're not gonna be going forward on the twentieth, uh, the twenty-third of this month, it is more likely gonna be the thirteenth of February.
And I, Mr. Russo's here too, uh, our landscape architect, so that leaves you enough time, Mr. Russo, to work on the land, the, the, the lands, the revised landscaping plan? So I, I, with the input that I've received from my consultants and with Mr. Green's permission, that's what I would suggest we would do, we would hold this open till the February thirteenth meeting, we would get the revised plans that we've referred to to you, to everybody, meaning Mr. Green and yourself, a week in advance, and then we'd have February thirteenth.
I, I think that's fine, I just want to make sure everybody's aware that it should, for some reason, that we don't anticipate that agreement isn't reached, that's gonna put the commission in a bit of a tighter schedule for deliberating and acting, but in the good faith notion that agreements will, that, that sounds false, but I, but, so we're not, so we could publish other matters to be heard on the twenty-third, not inclusive of this item, and proceed with this on the thirteenth of February. So, it's fine.
So how long do you have? Can you, uh, Mr. Jameson, again, putting you on the spot, I apologize, but can, if we're going to have the hearing on the, the third, the continued hearing on the thirteenth, will you be able to get the revised architectures to me by the third of February?
Yes.
Okay, then we're good.
Very good.
That's, that's very helpful.
I, I don't think I should do anything more tonight, because I might kind of forget everything I said.
Yeah, the reason I, just for the commission's benefit and the public's, the, the reason I'm asking this is because I have to commit to a public hearing notice tomorrow by eleven AM, so I don't want to burn a date where I, we can do other matters if this matter is not gonna be on that agenda, so I just, just, just so we're clear on the motivation for.
Okay.
We gotta do that.
Then I think, um, other than, there may be some other public, there's at least one.
Thank you, gentlemen and ladies.
Is there, uh, anyone else in the room who wants to hear it on us before we go online? So we can go to Alex Ruta, uh, and thank you for your patience.
Oh, no problem, thank you for your, thank you for your time as well, and, uh, I did have some other concerns that I won't need to speak to tonight because of the compromise that you've all been speaking, speaking towards. So I'll research, I could probably, I guess, will, will, will there be public comment at the, uh, February, uh, thirteenth meeting?
Yes, that will be a mention of this public hearing.
I'm sorry?
Yes, yes, public comment.
Oh, okay, uh, but the only, the only other issue that I, or two issues that I wanted to just bring up, just for consideration, uh, in terms of the traffic study, uh, there was, there wasn't a test strip or sensor strip, uh, put, put on Woodrow Avenue or King's Highway West, and I think that might, I, I agree with, uh, Mr. Respert's, uh, analysis. But I, I was just hoping that we, in a, with a new study, we could incorporate those two streets in terms of the traffic flow. I know some of that's been addressed with this, with this compromise, with stop signs and what have you. But since they, this, I guess the town or the state prohibits turning at that light on the post road to get to Peace Avenue, the only way to access that now would be to come down King's Highway West from the post road heading east or coming down Woodrow Avenue. So I think that would add a traffic load to that study. That was one concern I had. And, and the other one, I, I still have a concern that even with the downsizing of the building, I have a concern about the number of parking units that, that are available. You know, I, I understand the, the math where it's, you know, it's I, I, I think Attorney Fallon mentioned that it was one point some odd cars, you know, 1.35 cars per tenant, but not to be, not to be smart, but, but I, I don't think too many people drive a third of a car. So there's, there's, there's probably two cars. Most people have so many cars now in the families. I think first of all, if it's a first customer basis and the parking garage is full, where are they? We've already talked about off-street parking, which is already pretty tight in that area. I know I, I, I own a property on 209 Woodrow Avenue. And especially this time of year, the plows can't even get down the road to plow to clear the road because people are on-street parking. So the road looks like a ski slope basically coming down as opposed to a well-plowed street. And it makes it tough also for the residents this time of year to take, to get their car off, off the road because they're plowed in by the plows. So it's, it's rather that, that's another security issue and you still have children walking up that road to get the bus stop during those conditions. So I, I don't, I, I have a concern that there's not enough parking for the amount of units that are going to be there. I don't, nothing was mentioned. Guest parking, overnight parking, you know, with people that have friends over, out of town people. That wasn't addressed in the, in the total parking availability. And that also goes part and parcel with the Jennings personnel because I believe as Mr. Reeseberg mentioned that, that parking area is for his business operation. So where are those cars and where his employees are parking? You know, once that building is, is put up. So I just wanted to enter that into the conversation to see if, since we're doing this compromise, maybe that could be addressed as well. You know, before the next meeting. That's, that's, that's pretty much it at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Jameson. Any questions? Any other members of the public joining remotely or by phone who want to be heard on this?
Maybe you might want to say if anybody's on the phone, they have to press star six.
Thank you. If, if anyone is joining by phone who wishes to be heard, please press star six to take yourself off mute. Sounds like there is no one else. So with that, that will conclude public comment for tonight. We will hold the hearing open to February 13th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.